The time is 5:02 PM and I'm calling to order a work session for the City Council of City Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. And we are going to begin our work session with, which is focused going to be on the short-term rental regulations that we've been looking at for the past few council meetings and the zoning commission's been looking at for the past few months. Before we get into that, we are going to open up for citizen public communication. And as a reminder, we're not taking any action as part of this work session. We're going to be working through the item and then making any recommendations that we will then take potential action on as part of agenda item number 10 in tonight's council agenda. Any members of the public or residents wish to speak at this time? All right. We'll move on to our work session items. So discuss the following but take no action during the work session for the proposed short-term rental registration regulations. And so council, when we left our council meeting last time, we had identified that we wanted to spend some extra time going through both the proposed version that came out of the zoning committee and out of our discussions, as well as the proposed edits from Councilmember Litchfield, and determine if we want to go forward with certain changes or updates that we would then proceed with potentially adopting later or reviewing later as part of the agenda number 10. I'm hoping, council, that we can come up with a good solution that meets the majority of your needs that we've been identifying throughout this process. We've also, I think, as a reminder, we did, I don't think we have any specific comments for short-term regulations except for one I saw in OpenGov that came in a little bit late this afternoon, just to, you know, remind folks that, and you can go there, read that statement, so I'll just give a summary, that there's at least one comment in there that I saw as of our meeting start time. That's the only one. No additional comments, okay. Thank you. So council and staff, have we, have we, the versions that we have in our backup, can you just make sure that we explain which ones we have for review? We have, the one that came out of our last discussion is unchanged from the last council agenda, and then we also have the version that Councilmember Litchfield included as part of his feedback prior to the council meeting, is that correct? Okay. All right. So council, let's open up for our work session and discussion. We can begin, you know, anywhere, we can go line by line if that's amenable. I think there's certainly some room here for possible changes that we suggested I captured last time, which includes potentially increasing the timeline for when permits would have to be applied for. That's one option that we talked about and discussed. Another is loosening some of the restrictions that are listed as far as inspections or required paperwork. And then, of course, there is, I think the comment that's worth, that we didn't discuss is like, when would this go into effect, you know, whether there'd be some type of grace period or period before we put it into effect so that there's time for staff to prepare for the applications and for business owners to prepare for the process as well. And then we'd also want to talk about any fees that we would want associated with any application process as well. So we'll start with Councilmember Rosengard.
I have a couple of things I wanted to bring to the table. The first thing is, after going through this, how many times we've seen this and read it and gone to zoning commission and listened to them and so on, this is work that another staff person will have to do right now. Who are we thinking as this person who's going to do STR inspections, deal with registration, keep a record of all STRs and if they're in compliance or not, and then enforce these rules? Who's this person?
It's a combination of Matt and I. It is, the permit is applied through the online portal, so limited paperwork, and then our third-party inspection is MACOMIS, so long as they have an inspection list, it's...
So MACOMIS would go and do the official inspection?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not looking at hiring another person just to do inspections and so on. While I'm on it, and I know this isn't the same topic, permits. Who does permits?
This is an online permit that my permit now has already created, so when the applicant applies, they're essentially creating their own permit. It gets reviewed internally by staff and it's an automated process.
Okay. So next is, in the backup, it says, "While a special permit process cannot be used to regulate STRs, a simplified registration process can be used as a matter of public safety and information." Okay, so the word simplified is what I'd like to see. We have six pages where we had none. Now we've got six. Is it possible to get this down to two, three maybe at the worst? So that's what I'm, I'm, I'm late at the game.
In terms of the registration itself?
Terms of this.
Oh.
This article.
Well, any good ordinance has to have the components that this sheet has, the definition, the uses, and the whys. So the ordinance itself is actually only, the ordinance itself is eight pages and it incorporates the definitions and the sections listed here. As you strike out, or if you strike out, then it shrinks.
Of course. So I'm leaning more towards Councilmember Litchfield's recommendations to some degree, minus the area where it's brochures, and we might change the word brochures to a handout or a binder or something like that, because not everybody wants to go and spend a lot of money making brochures. So I'm just going to go right on down my list that I have and start...
Which version do you want me to pull up? The as amended or Councilmember Litchfield's version?
Well, I'm, it's hard to say, because I'm cutting and then accepting and then cutting and accepting. Let me go ahead and...
Okay, I will start with our original and then we can go from there.
But that line one actually still has all the components.
Yeah, but you just haven't redlined. I may not have marked up.
Yeah, Councilmember Rosengard, would it be okay if we just go section by section so we don't have to skip around as each person gives their comments? And then we can get sort of consensus from each section as we go along? Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree that would be a good way to do it, because we don't have, some sections we don't have any comments on from either version and we can, you know...
We can zip through that, so...
Mayor Protim, you had your hand raised.
You understand, if you give the floor up, sometimes you can't get it back in order to get your point across, but...
We'll make sure that we...
You'll have it at each section.
Mayor Protim.
Okay. I think then I would like to propose that they publish some document for the public and for us. So I think that if we are looking X or Y, I suggest that we need to start looking the document that we have here, that was proposed, because in that way, if somebody from the public is looking, they will follow that. And now looking that, I agree, I suggest that if somebody has the table, we'll go with one, two, three, and if they can do that chronologically, and you as the chief of the table, you try to stop or continue, because even though I don't believe that, we will advance too much. Thank you.
So I think just in terms of backup, both versions were included in the work agenda or work session agenda backup, is that correct? So the version we're looking at right now on the screen, is this the...
This is Councilmember Litchfield's amended version with the red lines.
Okay, so we can at least use that as a reference point and this is something that is included in the backup?
Yes.
Can you go up to the top section and I'll just go section by section? I'll pause just in case anybody has any comments, but we're starting with section 50.118, Purpose and Applicability of Short-Term Rental Registrations. There were no red lines in Councilmember Litchfield's version and there were no comments that we received regarding this. Does anybody have any input or changes to that section? All right, moving on to section 150.119, Definitions for Short-Term Rental. Again, there were no inputs, no changes proposed by Councilmember Litchfield and we did not make any changes other than what we talked about adding for bedroom and sleeping unit as in the prior council meeting. Councilmember Rosengard.
Okay, "On local emergency contact means an individual other than the registrant who resides within 20 miles of the subject property." Who is going to make sure that they reside within 20 miles of the registered property? If somebody lives out in Leander and they have a short-term rental in Sunset Valley, they can't do it because they don't live within 20 miles?
It's going to be based on what they place on the registration, on the application. So if they're outside the 20-mile radius, then no, theoretically according to the way it's written, they could not have a short-term rental. And the whole purpose of that was, if there is an issue on the property, they should be able to resolve it very quickly.
So if a, we had a resident who lived in Leander, let me put it another way, we had a staff member who lived in Leander, and that staff member, if they purchased a home in Sunset Valley and rented it out as a short-term rental, this would deny them that opportunity.
If they are, if they are more than 20 miles from the property, yes.
So is anybody on council willing to change that from 20 miles to 60 miles, an hour's drive?
The 20 miles came from one hour travel time?
And Rudy, just let me jump in, the owner doesn't have to be the individual responsible for the property. They could designate somebody who lives within response times that are required, right? That's the other thing, so...
Yeah, I would support the extending it and also the, another aspect of this that feels weird and oddly enforceable is that if that person lives 20 miles away but is also on vacation or something, like it's a weird, it's a weird thing to like name their domicile as the thing rather than can be there within an hour or something. Like, it's the wrong metric to focus on, I think, if our responsibility is really, if we're trying to really minimize response time. So I would be happy to maybe think about another thing, like literally just like one hour away.
I think that they are not talking only about the owner. They are talking about somebody that will be responsible. So the owner, he can be in Japan, but he has one person designated, and that person needs to be within one hour to come. This is how I can read that.
And that's how I read the intention too. So the proposed change would either be to extend the radius to 60 miles as Councilmember Rosengard or to change the text, I think, to something that along the lines of an individual other than the registrant who resides within one hour travel of the subject property, right? And that's, that's a little bit more...
Resides is maybe the wrong term, or like who will be there or can be there or must be there or something like that seems right? Like, I think the residence of that person is immaterial.
Councilmember Johnson.
We're more concerned about the hour, right? The ability to like respond to things within an hour, right? So like, can't we just, you know, you have an hour, you can live 100 miles away, if you can get there in an hour, then cool. And if you can't be there, then, I'm less concerned with like the rules that we're putting in place to say like 20 miles, 60 miles, or whatever, and I'm, I'm thinking about the nuisances. If you're not a nuisance, then this will never come up, but as soon as you start inviting the type of people that just make a nuisance out of it, then I'm, I'm going to come back to that over and over again, that it's like, I want the neighbors to have, you know, recourse, you know, to kind of like say, "This is not a good STR owner," and they need to be like slapped down.
Councilmember Rosengard.
How about if we got rid of the statement, because I agree with Councilmember Litchfield, that it resides within 20 minutes? How about can respond within 60 minutes or respond within one hour?
Okay, we'll take that as a proposed amendment and I think we can work on the specific language, either, you know, as we adopt the ordinance or, you know, as, but I think this would be a good place to, you know, say, "There's a proposed amendment here and we can vote on whether we include it or not." Councilmember Johnson.
Are we looking for in-person response or are we just like in-contact response?
I would say in-person, if needed, in-person, but a lot of things are taken care of virtually these days, unless it's a fire, I mean, you're not going to come and respond to the fire, you're going to call the fire department. If it's somebody parking in the wrong place, you're going to call the police if they're violating that. If it's noise, you're going to call the police. A lot of times it's taken care of virtually. You don't have to be there physically in order to take care of a situation.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that, because like, if, if there's a complaint, then it's just like, the person who's renting has the contact information of the person that's there, it'd be like, "Yo, turn down the music, you're going to ruin my day here." And then like, that gets taken care of, they don't have to show up. So yeah, just respond within an hour.
This is meant to be able to respond within one hour if emergency personnel request you to come, for instance, there's a loud party, loud music playing, we knock on, the police knock on the door, they won't open the door. You, you know, the neighbors are hearing the loud music and we're waiting, but we can't go in for loud music. We need a rep to come out to deal with this. So when it, an hour, within an hour, someone would need to respond, not what we would think of as an emergency, like a fire or flood or something like that. It's if emergency personnel say, "Hey, we need you out here as soon as possible."
And do emergency personnel want to talk to someone in person?
We're going to need, if, for instance, if there's a loud, yeah, loud party, they look out the window and see us, lock the door and turn the music up even louder. Okay, you're going to be, you don't want to wait more than an hour while a concert is going on inside, so we're going to call the contact person, say, "We need somebody to come in here and either come there and shut the power off, do whatever," but...
Yeah.
Allow right of entry, something like that, yeah. Now, that could be countered if we could, the same way we do the enforcement authorizations or vacation watches for residents, we could have them just give us the ability to handle those problems. Each year they would sign an enforcement authorization and we could act as their agent for these types of emergencies.
Oh, that's great. I mean, I'm just thinking of the, the person who just goes off two weeks, turns south by southwest and wants to rent, but they have, they go on vacation somewhere and they're different time zone, and if they could contact you or, you know, sign that authorization over, that is perfect.
Do we, as, as residents and people that are going to do STRs, like, I get that that's kind of like a service that the police can provide, but I think about Walmarts in small towns that get rid of their private security because, "Oh, we'll just call the police every time somebody..." And then all of a sudden, that's all you do is just, maybe I'm taking this to the extreme and you're like, rolling your eyes, but like, at what point do you just say like, "We have been called five times to these people and the REITs have asked us to do like close walks once in 10 years." And it's just like, like, when is too much of your time?
More than once.
Like a, from a close, from a close...
We'll deal with them on, it won't be the same individuals. And again, for us, it's just a call, we're going to handle it. Whether they, we go one time, two times, we'll just start writing tickets or taking enforcement, which is what we do, so I don't anticipate it being, because there's, there's mechanisms in there for people who just are repeat offenders anyway, so eventually we could revoke their permit, period.
Yeah. When I was reading these ordinance, they say when you have three violations, you cannot, you cannot continue with that. So in that case, the police will give it to us some notes, but it can be another type of violations that not necessarily would be with the police. So with this property, if they continue more than three, they, they don't have more opportunity to continue open. So I, I think that sometimes the word emergency is a very open or vague, local emergency. So in that context, it's the same then when you're in some factory or someplace, you need to have somebody that will be to respond. He's the responsible and he will respond or she will respond to some situations. To who? It is funny, because sometimes when we say the police, sometimes in some places, when you call the police, the police didn't act. They go to the house that they made a complaint, and later they go to the house and they say, "We had a complaint from, from that house." And sometimes, I think that we need to be careful sometimes to maintain some privacy with these kind of things. And this is why I, I think that we, we need to have some way how we will proceed with all of these, and I agree that we need to be simple, but we need to have that something. So in all of that, we spent at this moment nice 12 minutes talking, yeah, almost 14, and we came to maybe respond or something and keep going with this more or less.
So in this section, we're going to note that there's proposed changes to the local emergency contact that we want to potentially include in the final adopted ordinance, even if that means that we want to have some language that comes back, if we want to have like another final version of it, if we want to include something that we're including like emergency authorization for police. Any other items in this section that council members would like to call out? And this is again, section 150.119, Definitions for Short Terminals. Moving on to section 150.120, Short-Term Rental Registration Requirements. So this is a section where there are a number of changes proposed by Councilmember Litchfield, and we also had a discussion on this last time with regards to the, the staff recommendations for keeping registration requirements in order to be able to, to, you know, to support the assessment of the property's viability or, or, you know, compliance with the ability to host short-term rentals or what's being proposed. So let's start with, let's just go line by line on this one, because I think that might be useful for us to, to discuss them. So as part of the registration requirements, providing the name, address, phone number, and email address of the property owners of the short-term rental property. I think that's in agreement.
That was legal chimed in, that it has to be the owner, it cannot be a lessee.
Okay. Number two is verification that the short-term rental property is the registrant's property. So this has to be, we do not, we're not allowed to, in the highlighted area, to have the permission from the property owner if the registrant is not the owner. Is that correct?
That was our direction from legal.
How, how do they verify? What's that process?
Verify ownership?
Uh huh.
Oh, we'll probably just check TCAD.
Check TCAD, okay.
So as part of the registration requirements, not them providing verification then, it's just, we can get the name, address, phone number, and then it's us verifying that that name, address, phone number is the registrant's property?
Okay.
Okay. So they're not supplying their own verification, in other words, as part of the registration?
Isn't there, I thought the law around the, you can't treat leases differently from owners pointed toward, we can't, I guess this goes to the section two, but like, the person who's the primary occupier that's going to be doing the short-term renting is the person that fills out the form, and whether they're leasing or own, the city can't treat them differently. That's the outcome of that Austin Supreme Court case, correct? The city can't discriminate against leases?
Oh, your microphone, Barbara.
I, I believe so.
The Zatari case? You're not supposed to discriminate with regard to how you treat them, but from an, from a verification of whether or not somebody has the right to authorize somebody to be allowing others to come in, there can be a process in which you try and figure out whether or not those people have a right to, in other words, you're starting to get a very tenuous line and lineage of who has the right to let somebody else come in. And the owner has leased it to you. If you're bringing in a lease that says, "I can do anything I want under the sun and stars, and I can, I can rent it," but a lot of leases have no subleasing, no subtenancy, no additional occupation, no whatever. And so rather than getting into the minutia of can that person actually lease through a sublease or a subtenancy even for a short-term rental, that property, it's, we are looking for the owner to make sure that owner is okay with it, because this is a business prospect, not just a legal, "Hey, can, can Joe stay here for 30 days?"
Sure, and a lot of leases do have that permission. So some of them say you can't, some of them say you can. So now is the city inspecting leases? Or this is what this number two was, that we had, that legal struck out, where I suggested that we ask permission from the property owner, and legal struck that out because we can't discriminate between leases and property owners. So I'm confused.
I'm sorry, say this again, I'm, I'm sorry.
So we were told in the last meeting that we couldn't have this term, this clause that says, "Permission from the property owner if the registrant is not, if the registrant is not the owner." So that was my suggested language. I was told that legal threw that out, because legal said, "We can't discriminate between leases and property owners." So can we, can we ask for that permission or not?
If you can't, okay. I was thinking you were trying to do something different. I, I was not understanding what the question was to me.
The strikeout, the lessee, and also the STR registration.
Right, and that, I mean, these are, this is what complicates STRs. Right, and that, I mean, these are, this is what complicates STRs. I mean, all of these things that we're, you are dealing with, quite frankly, I, these are in fact exactly what complicates STRs, is who has the right to give authority, and who has the right then for receiving maybe a citation? Um, because that's the, that's the, the, quite frankly, that is what a lot of cases have hung on, is have you cited the right person for violations? Have you, you know, and so then, you know, you have somebody like the chief here who's walking around and citing, you know, okay, the landowner, the lessor, the persons who are at the party, and, you know, you start handing these things out like candy, and it starts, you know, becoming exhausting, because then you have all these people coming into the court saying, oh, I, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't there, I wasn't this, I wasn't that. So, yes, there is an enforceability issue, yes, there isn't, you're not supposed to, to, um, treat them differently, but if, what kind of permission are we thinking that we're going to get from the landowner that would be okay?
I don't know, I don't really support this very much at all, so.
Well, I get that, but I mean, you offered a construct of-
So you're, you're telling us that, like, this is gonna be an enforceability nightmare, or maybe not in those words, you said it's very complex to figure out enforceability, nobody really knows how to work these laws, because they're complicated-
No.
And we're sitting there looking at this new eight-page set of rules, like, are is this gonna get thrown out?
No, I, what I'm saying is, okay, first off, you're not regulating, you are asking for a registration. So that's first and foremost, and that is critical of a, of a difference in the cases that have held, when they've looked at these things, is whether you are actually regulating, or are you just simply registering? So when you're looking at a registration, and you're looking at somebody who's saying, okay, um, if you've got permission from the property owner to register this property as an STR, then just provide the document that allegedly shows that you have permission, i.e. a lease, perhaps, that would have it highlighted, I can lease this out for short-term rentals all day long. That would evidently, you know, again, if that's the, the issue and the concern, then you can go ahead and do it. What I'm telling you is that through the years that STRs have been challenged, there's been a lot of progress as far as what we are looking at, how we are regulating, how we are handling these things. There's still three cases up at the Supreme Court that we're waiting to see what other shoe drops, quite frankly. I am. I, I've had, I've been at two conferences this year, and each one of them talks, is speaking about STRs, and whether you, and, and how some case, you know, some cities are handling them here in Texas. So, I've got, you know, when I'm, when I'm telling you that, yes, they can be a bit of a conundrum and a, and a nightmare, I mean, talk to Austin. They've been going round and round and round with these things for years. So, yeah, I can't deny that it can be a nightmare, but that's if you're trying to do anything more than simply register.
But aren't we in, then just register? Because we're saying, these are all the rules about what you can and cannot do with that property. Like, I totally get, like, we're putting the word registration, and we're doing it a, like, will issue rather than can issue, and so maybe that makes it a little different, but that's the registration part. This whole backend of the thing where there's like, pages of rules about what you can and can't do, and that that right will be then revoked, you know, on the single word of one city employee, like, that feels a lot more like regulation than registration to me.
So from a, from a staff perspective, the, um, the registrant property is per address. So let's say they have three strikes, and the tenant moves out, and here comes a new tenant. And so, this homeowner who's living next door to this thinks they're gonna have some respite, because that person doesn't live there anymore, but the next lease still says the same thing, and it's still a problem house with just a different person. So from the point of enforcement, because really, that's what it's gonna boil down to, when it does become a problem, because they will become a problem, um, they will proliferate without any sort of registration or regulation, without the ability to, um, have the property be registered to the property owner, where if you revoke registration, it's the property owner's revocation, not the tenant's revocation, because tenants change, and they will change, especially when that property stops being lucrative. And then the maintenance standards, who are you holding responsible? Are you holding the tenant responsible for the maintenance standards, or are you holding the property owner responsible for the maintenance standards?
So for this particular item, it just, it, it sounds like that we could include the, the proposed clause, permission from the property owner, if we were willing to specify what type of permission that is, and then the city reviewing it. Like, I don't think that that's, it sounds like that's possible. It's recommended for simplicity to keep it limited to the owner, you know, for a variety of reasons, but that's, that's what I'm hearing or understanding from, from staff and, and our legal team. Councilor Reitz?
Yeah. I guess I'm okay with keeping that in, in the space that if it's not in there, what that says is that I can go rent a house in Sunset Valley, and just use it as a business and do short-term rentals, and my owner may not, may or may not know about it. And, uh, and it would be as a, more of a business versus, um, as someone who wants to rent out while they go on vacation and such. And I'm not sure we really wanna encourage tons of short-term rentals in our city, so I, I think I'm okay with that. It kind of alleviates problems up front, then down the road, where you have to figure it all out later if there's problems. So it shouldn't be that much of a burden.
No, I think the whole issue also, when we started this conversation, was some respite for the property owners. This was not the ability for somebody else to come rent a home and create a business here for short-term rentals. That was not the impetus for these type of regulations, nor do we wanna create that kind of environment.
Yeah, there's a whole website for this.
They're not regulations, remember?
There, there's a whole website for this, and I was talking with someone that does this. They lease houses, and then they rent them. And that, that is a business. And I'm not sure that's really what we want here, so, um, so I, I think I'm okay with that.
Councilor Litchfield?
But again, God, this is, so if I show up, so if I, I was leasing, I did a lease purchase on my house, right?
Right.
And my lease said I could use it for short-term rentals, not because we wanted it, but because the landowner, she thought it was a cool thing about Sunset Valley that they're totally open. We never did it, don't intend to do it. So, I feel like if I fill out this form, and I attach that paragraph from my lease that says, this is fine, then that should be fine. Like, why is the city gonna discriminate against me?
But that's contra, and, that, that's contra, your statement is contradictory, because you were doing a lease purchase, hence it's a purchase contract.
It was a, the purchase part of it was a handshake thing, there was not a purchase contract attached to it, and that cost me a couple hundred grand, but that's okay.
Councilor Jelton?
So, I, I'm kinda thinking what you said, like, if the, if the owner is just like, I don't care, like, you're leasing it, I'm away, but the thing is, I, the reading, maybe not reading between the lines, maybe you actually said this, Barbara, but like, if, if it was such a nuisance that the owner's just like, kick them out, okay, I'll just Airbnb it myself, and then we turned around and said like, no, you're, you're cut off. Like, this registration was for this property, does the property owner have a right to go to like, work its way through the courts to be like, it wasn't me, it was them?
Yeah.
And we're just like-
Yep.
Who, but you, you were absentee. You're like, you, you allowed the problem to, so, which is better? I, I mean, I, if we're gonna-
There's stuff going on in real estate. Yep.
Is that kinda what you're, you're saying, that like, the property owner could kinda have a case saying like, it wasn't my fault?
There's certainly cases that are out there that have done that dance.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, Austin has them, and, and others have, have raised those issues that it wasn't me, it was a lessor, a sublessor, it was whatever. And, and I mean, quite frankly, you have those-
You're against this just because, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Quite frankly, you have some of those situations, whether it's short-term rentals or not. I mean, a lessor can have a party, and have a wild time, and you're gonna be still trying to, you know, chief's gonna have his troop, you know, people going out and trying to calm it down, and then they're, they're still gonna raise the same issue of, well, I'm, I was the landowner, but I didn't realize there was a party going on, and it was, you know, it was Justin's house, and he was having a party, and I didn't, I, you know, it, don't cite me. So, I mean, you, you have those things that happen no matter what.
But, but, so, your, your suggestion was to leave this in, right? And you don't like it for-
That's, that's his words.
You struck-
Highlighted yellow is Justin's comment. It was stricken by Veronica, our last attorney, who sat in that chair.
Which makes no sense, because I agree with that statement.
But she's a lawyer, like, she's just trying to leak, protect us legally.
I agree with the, the yellow highlighted statement that says, if the registrant is not the owner, they have to show the owner gave them permission to do a short-term rental.
But our attorneys are trying to save us a bunch of money here, so I kinda go down that road.
Well, the, there's, the attorney's trying to save us a bunch of money by like, removing a ton of rights from a lessee.
Yeah.
And that's not cool.
And that's not fair. So, if the, if the lessee has the ability to do that, and permission from the owner, they should be able to do it. So, I like the way it's written without any yellow or crossouts.
I, I will just say though, like, if we worry about like, property owners that potentially don't care about the neighbors of their STR, you're gonna take it another degree farther away to like, companies that are basically doing like, property arbitrage for STRs, and it's just like, they are super not gonna care whether the people are having parties. It's like, eh, we lost that one, we'll go over here and make these people's lives a disaster.
And those companies are absolutely not going to blink at all about any of our registration requirements. Those companies will submit DNA tests, they'll do anything, they will comply perfectly with the registration requirements.
Yep.
Everything we're talking about here is an onerous thing we're putting on homeowners. Those businesses don't care. They are very good at compliance. They have like, a regulatory moat that's like, their defensive thing. It's a whole business model.
So counsel, I'd like, just in the advice of moving on for time purposes, we do have essentially two proposals. One is that we either allow leases to provide evidence that they have permission, which then it becomes a, you know, a matter of how do we verify permission, that has to be, something that works out as part of the registration process or the review process, or we don't. And I'd recommend we move on to the next items, because it's, it, we have, we can choose between those two as part of the regulation. Okay, so moving on to number three, which is name, address, and phone number, email address of the designated local emergency contact. This could be the same person as the, as number one, or it could be whoever they designate. And then the definition of that local emergency contact is what we're describing about, any change to that section?
Nope.
All right. Number four, the maximum number of occupants permitted for a dwelling unit is three times the number of bedrooms, per the Texas Property Code, section 92.010.
It's fine.
Number five, a submission of a sketch floor, floor plan of the dwelling with either dimensioned room layout, or a submission of a sketch floor plan of the dwelling with room layout. Mayor Potem?
Yeah. When you were reading number, number four, they say, the maximum number of occupants for the dwelling unit is three times the number of bedrooms. Okay, we have in villas, that is very small place, we have four and five bedrooms. So if you have three people, in five bedrooms is 15 people, and if you assume that each bedroom will have one driving or parking, we don't have plenty parking for all of them. In, in other places is different, but for villas, that will be difficult. Number four, the, the three times the number of bedrooms, so, eh, if you have five bedrooms, you can have 15 people, but you will have per bedroom, one vehicle, so you have five parking spaces, but we don't have five parking spaces.
Well, I think the question is, two different questions, right? There's either the number of people you have, which could be tied to the number of parking spaces, or it's the maximum, they're separate questions, right? What is the maximum spaces for that specific site? Right now, they're, they're two separate questions. You could have 15 people, but only have one parking space, right, for a site. And then, in that case, it's up to the occupant, or the, the renters, to determine how they get 15 people.
Make an Uber.
I, I don't want to put any bad point. Later, you will read that, and that will refer to each bedroom, one parking space. So that's all, when I say, you will find that later. I don't remember where, but I was reading that. Okay, we will keep going, no problem.
Okay, so the, the number five, which is the sketch floor plan, um, it's, I think that the decision here, or the input is whether we want a dimensioned room layout, or just a, a sketch of the room layouts, um, indicating, I assume, you know, which, which rooms are bedrooms for the purposes of calculations. Um, Councilor Litchfield, can you explain just in terms of the difference between dimensions in your mind, and what's your, what we were proposing?
I'm just trying to make this as low, as easy as possible, as simple as possible. And I could definitely see somebody looking at a dimensioned room layout requirement. And when I asked, uh, when we talked to staff about it, it's one of these meetings, they said, they just want a general idea of the floor plan for like, directing emergency personnel.
Yeah.
When I read dimensioned floor layout, it's like, do I have to know the feet and inches, and like, the widths of every doorway? That may not be, like, that may be like, too big of an onus, so I would just prefer to say just a room layout. Um, also, the city's got all the building plans and the occupancy certificates, and then this gets into like, other weird things about, should we make everybody in the city submit built, dimension room layouts? And, I don't know. So I just wanted to make that as simple as possible. I don't know the inches of every room, and I don't want to measure the inches of every room, but just saying like, the living room's here, the bedroom's over there, that should be good enough. And then, I don't even know what good enough for what? Like, this seems like a weird requirement to me at all, but, I don't know. I was willing to concede dimensioned.
Councilor Rosenberg?
There are Texas Property Codes for rental property, period. Um, also, I've never, and I'm sure there's lots of folks in, in the city of Sunset Valley who have rental houses, I have rental houses, I have never had to submit a sketch floor plan to the city for any of that, not in Sunset Valley. And I've never had to submit a site plan or survey showing how many people can park on the property for my rental houses. So to me, it just seems a little bit far-reaching for this. And I understand the logic we're using is for safety, uh, for egress and ingress, but we're also gonna be doing an inspection, which I've never had to do on any of my rental houses, so.
So part of the, part of the dimensioned floor layout, I, I don't particularly care for you, or dimension, I think it out, but part of the layout goes to address, I mean, some of the one villas where you have a roof and a kitchen, that's a better statement. They have covered areas where more than 15 people or 12 people are under master's. So where the family, if we have that, there are, I think, how many people should be there, and we have that number of people. Number six, truly, is, not just the parking, it should be where you can freely park when there are 15 people at home, or 12 people at home, or 15 people at home, is, we have some very high work on our neighborhood discovering, our, our, that the driver's license is now 100% in purpose. So, if we're gonna let a car with an Indian property along the Carroll Street, then why would we have a purpose?
Yeah, I personally think number five should be kept in, given all the problems we've had with people being very concerned about people parking in front of their houses, et cetera.
Number six?
I mean, number six, yeah. And I'm okay with dimensions being crossed out, but number six, I would keep in there. Um, I think that one of the things is that the owners need to be cognizant of extra vehicles and not invading, or eva, invading on their neighbors, or encroaching on their property or space, kind of. So, I'm okay with number six. It could be just a site plan, I mean, or something, it doesn't have, you know.
It doesn't have to be a survey.
No, it doesn't have to be a survey.
Councilor Rosenberg?
You had the word sketch to that, oh, sorry.
Sketch is fine with me too, so.
But it says, site plan survey of the property indicating maximum number of vehicles that can be legally parked on the property without encroaching on the street. Parking on the street is legal, it's not illegal.
That's okay, though. To me, I would prefer that we as a city monitor this, and we keep it under control in some sense.
So the building code-
Because I'm thinking about the villas, I'm thinking about all these places, and so I want, you should be able to park in your driveway.
So, the building code does require you to have at least two off-street parking spaces, potentially more, depending on the bedroom. It does require that already. You cannot build a house where you have no parking on the lot and you're left to park on the street. So, you must already have off-street parking. You must.
Of course.
The, the second part to that is, again, we have clear definitions of what is impervious and drivable and not drivable. So, if we are saying, okay, well, they can park wherever on the property so long as they're not on the street, then that's a whole other conversation that they're gonna be in front of you for a variance of impervious cover because they're gonna have been cited.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah. Eh, I think then when they say then, any can be parking on the streets, eh, first, in villas, we only can park in one side of the street, you cannot park in the other side. So, it's very difficult for some people because they don't have plenty of spaces. You have four, five hundreds, and in that five hundreds, you have to let them some space. So, in the circle that you have for parking is short, because it's the internal circle. And in addition, you have four, five hundreds, then they don't allow to be parking close to them. The other, eh, in meadows, they, they can have short rental terms, or no? Do, do they can have?
Yeah, we can.
They, they, they can allow in meadows?
Yes.
So, the homeowner association?
I can, yes.
So, they allow the homeowner association?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry that I am telling you in that way, but if they don't park the cars outside, they will have a problem. So, they allow also to be parking outside?
It doesn't, it does not address parking. It addresses whether or not the meadows allow short-term rentals. Yes, it does. The HOA does allow that. It does not address parking.
Yeah, but at this moment, that has parking. So, if a...
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we just keep that in.
Yeah, keep the pa- the, the parking, when they say they can, without encroaching the street. So, they need analyze case by case, because I don't believe that will be the same for everybody. This is what I tried to say.
Yeah, but I can fit probably, like, six cars on my driveway, so.
Well, very good. So, we will send you some of us to that place. Thank you.
So, counsel, we are approaching a time when we need to wrap this up, our working session. I, what I heard, and just kind of as a quick summary, is that there's some consensus on, you know, between staff and council of not including a dimension, the word dimension in number five. There, it seems like there's, could usually be a difference of opinion in number six, whether we keep it in or not, but I think there's maybe some concurrence that it doesn't need to be a site plan or survey, that there might be some, a sketch of the property, including the maximum number of vehicles. I heard that that, that might be amenable as well, just providing details of where the parking can happen on property so that it can be verified. Let's try to quickly go through some of these other ones. Number seven, property owner must submit a complete list of all rentals when the city advertised on all media sites. That was struck out by Councilor Lishfield.
Yeah.
Strike that.
Councilor Rosenberg?
I would agree with seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven being striked.
You said seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven being striked?
Yeah, I would, too.
Okay. Any other council members want to weigh in in terms of seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven? Be required, being, remaining requirements for registration? So, we're talking about listing of all the city, they advertise on media sites, the name, address, email, and phone number, telephone number of the resident owner, non-resident owner, property manager, resident manager, local emergency contact, and mortgagee, if there's mortgage agents, the property, but you'd already have the local emergency contact and the owner, as far as contact information, the trade name of the resident owner or non-resident owner, and names and addresses of all registered agents, should the parties be named and subject and be filing entities, and then zoning classification. So, I think that most of these are basically, you know, points of contact or, you know, to help us with figuring out points of contact.
Exactly. So, staff doesn't have a problem with number seven, we don't have a problem with striking the mortgage part out. There is question as to, I think zoning commission actually added trade names and registered agents, because if we are dealing with a business, we need to know who we're going to be contacting as their registered agent. And we, we can strike out zoning classification because obviously there's only residences here.
Councilor Rosenberg?
Well, and number three, can you add name, address, phone number, and if?
Yeah, just add it there.
And trade names, or registered agent?
Trade name, and registered agent, if applicable.
Okay. I think it's important that we capture the trade names so that we understand if we're dealing with a business in this case. Okay? And then, the number, the number twelve, number thirteen, acknowledgement or receipt of this, a copy of this article and agreement to comply with all provisions. So, that would be assuming, like, a checkbox that they can check on the registration form, that they've read this, registration shall provide a copy of the, the hotel tax questionnaire so that we have verification that, or, I think that one is a question because sometimes air, I think the comment is Airbnb usually handles that, so we'd wanna, it's either, I don't know how that's handled with Airbnb, like, if you file with Airbnb, if you can get documentation from them, that they are providing hotel occupancy tax?
Well, and we ran, we ran a query with Airbnb, and interestingly enough, there has been no hotel fee submitted by Airbnb for anybody in Sunset Valley, although there are Airbnbs on the site. And if you do the research on Airbnb, it is related to somebody who is acting as a corporation. If it's an individual acting as an individual, that's not necessarily going to be captured by Airbnb. So, that's why this Comptroller of Public Accounts is important. If we're going to be capturing hotel tax, then that's that important piece.
Councilor Lishfield?
So, that sounds, that's goofy to me. So, so, if I go on Airbnb as an individual and I rent out my house for three days, then Airbnb takes care of everything. But if I'm an out-of-state corporation, then I have to file a separate form. So, now the city's, like, inverting the burden to, like, the residents and making the residents do it, whereas they're not the problem.
Well, one is assuming they're using Airbnb and not their own site, that's the first. The second is, this isn't the city's onus, it's the resident who's requesting the service. So, the onus is on the resident.
They're, wait, wait, what service is the resident requesting?
They're requesting to use the STR.
Oh, no, we're not regist- we're not regulating them, we're just registering.
Well, I know, they're, they're...
It's not a request, right?
They are requesting to be registered.
Well...
So, we, we are passing regulation about this?
Well, we should...
Short-term rental registration regulations.
Then why did our lawyer just tell us that we're definitely not doing registrate- regulation, we're only doing registration, because if we try to regulate these, they're gonna be a problem?
We're not issuing a permit. We're issuing, or, we're not issuing anything, it's, it's a registration.
Okay. Sharon, have you done this form, this Comptroller of Public Accounts Form AP one oh two?
And after, after Sharon, after you speak, we're gonna go ahead and move into our regular council agenda so that we can, and we can revisit this when we get to item number ten.
Okay, Justin, could you repeat the question?
So, this Form AP one oh two by the Comptroller of Public Accounts Hotel Occupancy Tax Questionnaire, have you completed this form?
I hire a sep- when I'm, when I am short-term renting, I hire a separate company to basically pay the taxes for me. So, my accountant, you know, sends the money, or basically someone else takes care of it. So, I personally may have filled that out a long time ago.
I guess the question is, like, how hard is it to do? I, I was just kind of, like, asking from personal experience.
Well, I actually have, I, I have chosen to hire a third company to take care of it because some money has to go to different places, and I, numbers are my strong point.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather have someone else responsible who's gonna remember to do it every month.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people have been using Airbnb, though, and I don't know where that money's, they are collecting it from their guest, from the guest, but that money is not coming to us. So, I don't know what happened, what happens with Airbnb, so, but it's a problem.
Do we have any evidence that if I filled that form out, that that money would get to the city?
We have a list of payers from the hot fund. We have a list of payers every month. Sharon has listed on one, there's another house on Sterns, and then the hotel. Those are the three people, period, who show up on that list.
But you don't know anything about, we don't know anything about whether that will cause Airbnb to route the payment correctly, do we?
No clue.
Like, that's just, so, why are we having people do that, like, if it's not gonna help?
Well, one, because, again, Airbnb's not the only way to register. Two, again, if they're short-term renting, there is a fee to the state that is owed. That's the state law. That's not even a Sunset Valley law, that's the state law.
Totally get it.
So, in, just like you can't grandfather something that isn't legal, you shouldn't permit something that isn't there legally, or you shouldn't register something that isn't there legally, or regulate something that isn't there legally. So, if they're short-term renting and not paying their taxes to the state, probably not a good thing.
Right, nobody's asking for that. I'm just saying that this, like, if I fill out this questionnaire, it won't change Airbnb's behavior. So, why is the city gonna insist that I fill out this questionnaire? Because, like, Airbnb's gonna route the money however they do it.
Well, then that's a report to the Comptroller.
Not for...
You, you are responsible for it.
But I don't touch that money, I never see that money.
I don't care. You are still responsible.
But what does this questionnaire have to do with that? Like, if I'm violating state law by not sending the money?
Yes, you are.
Right, and that's one thing. I've never done it, I'm not doing it.
I know you're not.
But it's like, but this questionnaire does not affect the actual money destination, and what we're worried about is the money, so, like, why are we gonna make people fill out this questionnaire?
I think the question is, like, if somebody registers, they fill out the form, and we check the comptroller, the money's still not getting to us, then it becomes a, we contact the agency they're using...
We can contact Airbnb.
And say, there's, but, that being said, let's go ahead and close out our work session. I appreciate everybody's input, and we'll revisit this when we pick up the agenda number ten. So, I'm gonna close the work session at six oh two PM. There's, and we're just gonna continue with this, Sylvia, just in terms of our, you know, direction of staff at this point, number four. And closing work session at six oh two PM. Counsel, do we need to take a quick break, or are we good to go on, right into the council agenda?
We go on.
All right. Staff, are we good to go? Duncan, are we okay on just continuing with the recording?
Same.
Great. All right. Yeah, I was planning. All right. The time is six oh two PM, I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas, for Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Just as a note for attendees and folks that have been looking at our agenda, one item, which is the agenda number eleven, we are going to table until our July nineteenth meeting. The, the, the business owners that were requesting the variance wish to be here to speak in person, and so they've asked if we could move that or to accommodate their being able to talk to this item as part of the variance request process. So, my apologies that we had to do this at a late notice if you were here to speak. And we will, of course, you know, please, counsel, I would refer you to the opening of comments, there were a number of comments that were presented for this item, but we'll be bringing it back on July nineteenth, which is our next regular council meeting. With that, we're going to open up for citizen public communication. So, members of the public, if you wish to speak, you can at this time, if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item, we will also have a chance for you to do so. At that time, you can also fill out a comment card in order to, to note which item you want to speak, and so we can collect those, and so we'll have them ready for those items. And again, if you're here to speak for agenda number eleven, that is gonna be table till our July nineteenth meeting in order to accommodate the variance requesters' request to be able to, to be here in person and, and, and be available for, for questions from council.
Hi, Rudy.
Go ahead.
Now it's off. You've just turned it off. Yeah. There you go. Now it's on? Okay. Even though this is about the dark sky, what? Oh, my name is Lisa, I'm so sorry. And I live on Pillow Road. I am a resident here in Sunset Valley. I just wanted to say that I think there's a little bit of confusion on behalf of the shopping center, Lumens versus Kelvin. So, Kelvin can be warm or cool, the color of the light bulb, and I don't think that that affects how bright it is, which would be a different issue. Excuse me?
The agenda item was tabled.
It's tabled, but this is public comments, so we're allowed to talk about city business. And since this is a future business item, perhaps they might wanna look into that before they present. Because if they're talking about requesting bright parking lot, the color of the temperature shouldn't matter. That was just my point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public who should speak? Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Burton Pearson, and I live at thirty-nine Pillow Road. Been in Sunset Valley now for, I guess, twenty years, something like that, been here for about twenty years. I participated in council some years ago, and I'm beginning to participate again. I wrote an article here about the biodiversity crisis, since we are so well-placed to be able to reserve some prairie lands here. I thought it would be important for you to have some baseline information on that for the council. Some of the council members have been talking about that.
I did not.
Yeah. I have a PhD from what became sort of the, the unit for ecology, evolution, and population biology at UT. I've taught at a number of institutions, Southwestern at Georgetown, University of Texas, St. Edwards, and Houston Tillison. And anyway, what I wanted to say was just very simple today, you can, you can read some of this. If we were on a little spaceship, taking a tour of that spaceship, and you were listening to the docent, and all of a sudden, your child was missing, and you see there's a door here that says life support system, there's a door, I'm sorry, I'm used to lecturing where I move about, there's a, a door that says life support, and you notice your child in there, and that child is turning knobs on that system, you would rush in and say, oh, don't do that, because you know that it's probably a complicated system, the child does not know fully that system or how it operates, and therefore you probably shouldn't be turning knobs. And if, and if you watched the kid and he just did turn a knob from five to ten, you'd run in and turn that knob back down to five, at least, not knowing what other knobs the child had adjusted. Now, this happens to every industrialized planet, I'm sure, every, every planet with intellectual beings that begin to do things so that they can feel better in their habitat. You know, we make adjustments, we have an industrial revolution so we can get certain things, move better through space, get rewards. But at the same time, our biological knowledge is developing, and therefore, the biological knowledge doesn't keep up with the changes that we're, that we're making. So, when we notice that the dial's been turned to ten and should be on five, we've gotta turn it back. And so, basically, at this point, prairie, which recently, now we know, is one of the most actual diverse ecosystems on the planet, it's second only to the Brazilian rainforest in terms of number of species. Sunset Valley is gifted with large areas of meadow and prairie land. It's kind of our responsibility to take care of that. People haven't thought about that much. When the sod busters went out into the prairies and grew, and grew crops, we pushed the prairie back, pushed it back. This book, from the American Museum of Natural History, The Biodiversity Crisis and Losing My Counts, was written in two thousand and one. At that point, they estimated only four percent of Tallgrass Prairie was left, and now the Ottoman Society, this year, stated that now it's down to one percent. So, we push that prairie as far as we can push it. There's no reason to plave, cover, destroy one inch of it at this point, because we know now, we're losing one of the most diverse. And it supports so many insect species that are involved in so many other biological systems that were causing this dramatic, unbelievable change, that we, that's hard for us to recognize... And it supports so many insect species that are involved in so many other, uh, biological systems, that were causing this dramatic, unbelievable change, that we, that's hard for us to recognize, you know? I mean, if you read this, I tried to make this as simple as I could, but you'll notice there's complex problems-
Thank you, sir, it's been four minutes, thank you, sir.
Am I done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, there you go. See, that doesn't usually happen at school, but you can, the clock, you know?
Thank you, and, and so, counsel, hopefully everybody got a copy of this. If you didn't, um, we'll make sure that we distribute it from staff, and staff, you have a copy for, great, thank you, thank you for coming. Next person.
It was on, not now. On? Okay. Uh, Sharon Drinkwine, 5 Rees. Am I allowed to speak again to the STR issue, or are we done?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody involved in this. This has been a long process, and you've all been really putting a lot of brain power and time and effort into it, and this is important to me, and I really appreciate the work you're doing. I do, however, take issue with the staff statement that STRs, if unregulated, will become a problem. I've been doing this for maybe eight years, and in those eight years, with almost every weekend having people as guests in my home, I've, I've come into contact with perhaps two people or groups that have not been cooperative. Uh, and I think that when it comes to people who choose to rent their homes for, as STRs, we are not a member of, we're not members of a cabal that's bent on, you know, destroying the sanctity of residential neighborhoods. There are, most of us are, are really involved with and want to keep the peace and want everyone to be happy. So I, I know that anyone over 40 years old is probably a little uncomfortable with this sharing economy now. Um, it is a little foreign, um, perhaps pre-industrially, everyone shared things, but in our lifetimes, uh, the idea of driving someone you don't know in your car as an Uber driver is a little scary. And it, and you need a certain amount of trust, just like inviting a group of people to stay in your home with the stuff that you love. Involves a little bit of risk, and it can be a little scary. But this is the way that the world is moving, and in a way, it's kind of an environmental movement too, because you're making use of resources that perhaps would just go unused. Say if you're going on vacation, and your house is absorbing electricity with AC, why not share it with someone? So, anyway, I would like to say thank you, and, um, and good luck figuring all this out.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. Uh, I'm gonna stay at a high level tonight in terms of, uh, discussion, and I wanna amplify the lovely article that you have in front of you that, um, Burton wrote. Uh, it, it's really well worth reading, especially because we're talking about, um, reshaping, we've always been an environmental city, but we're now looking at sharing that environmental nature of our city with the public. Those are the kinds of things that we've been talking in, in our public conversation. And so things like dark skies are critical to that, things like prairie land are critical to that, things about maybe creating programs for homes to have prairie in them. You know, that, those are all kinds of things that we could become, uh, a leader in the country on. And so tho- those are the kinds of things that we really should pay attention, and we're really gifted to have people like Burton, who have such a deep knowledge about those kinds of things. And so I was doing my research on dark skies, which I've been working on here for, I don't know, ever since we began to talk about the ordinance, I've been sort of involved in it. And I went back to look at some of my arguments, which you can see in the things that I wrote. And a thing I didn't say, because it was sort of off-topic, but really made me think about this again, is water and electricity. So anytime we save electricity, we're saving water, and a lot of people don't know that. 45% in 2010 of the water that was used was for thermo, um, electric generated electricity. That's what, the cooling is a huge part of creating electricity. So people don't know that, they should, I'll, I'll send an article out for people to look at that. But that's really, so anytime we save electricity, we're saving water. And, and that's, the issue, the amount of water that's used but for residents that we're sitting here scrambling about is so much less than that which takes to, to do electricity. And I think we really need to take focus on that, so anything we can do to reduce electricity, that's why Austin Energy would say, "Let's just go insulate all their homes, because it saves us building a power plant." And, but not only does it save us building a power plant, it saves us water, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public or residents who should speak during the public comment section? And again, a reminder, we will have a chance for residents to speak during the agenda items. Um, and as a note for anybody arriving late, we are tabling agenda item number 11, which is the, the variance request, until our July 19th meeting, um, because the applicant wished to be able to speak in person to that item. Um, so there won't be a chance to talk to that one later. We, okay. Um, let's, I've been told that we need to take a five-minute break for resolving our technical, uh, you know, support for the stream. So at this point, we're gonna take a break at 6:15, and we're gonna resume our council session at 6:20 with public comments, um, at that time. All right, we're on break for five minutes. All right, we're resuming our council meeting at 6:20, and apologies for the interruption while we make sure the stream was working, so hopefully everybody who is watching the stream or recording the stream will, um, you know, be able to see and hear everything. Um, we are going to return to agenda number two, which is citizen public communication. If there's any additional comments, um, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address. All right. All right, if there's no other comments, we're gonna move to agenda number three, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Counsel, uh, Councilor Rosenbaum?
I move to approve, uh, agenda item number four, June 7th work session and city council minutes. Agenda item number five, election of November 8th. Number six, April financial statements. Number seven, financial policy 315, RE travel expense reimbursement. Number eight, utility box mini mural project of 14,000. Number nine, deny all bids for public works reception area due to cost. Number 12, calendar for comprehensive plan.
No, no, um, item 12 is, uh, no, no action, discussion, and staff direction.
And I approve it.
You can say anything you want, and Councilor Rosenbaum, all right, so we're gonna pull the agenda number 12, so we can have a discussion.
Okay.
So, on proposal, it is, uh, item number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, um, are, are, for approval on consent. Anybody wanna pull one of those items? All right, is there a second for the motion to move on consent items number four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine? Councilor Johnson?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the, consider act on approval, agenda number four, consider act on approval of the minutes from the June 7th, 2022 regular meeting and work session. Agenda number five, consider an act on approval of an ordinance calling for the regular election of the mayor and council members on number eight, 2022. Agenda number six, consider an act on approval of the April 2022 financial statements as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Agenda number seven, consider an act on approval of an amendment to the financial policy 315 regarding travel expense and reimbursement for city staff as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Agenda number eight, consider an act on approval of an inter-local agreement with the City of Austin for a utility box mini mural project in an amount not to exceed 14,000, to be funded from the economic development line item for beautification purposes. And agenda number nine, consider an act on denying all bids for public works reception area enclosure project. Um, I did have a question on number nine, just in terms of, do we need to authorize reissue of the bids without the, the bulletproof glass? Or is that something that, because we approved the agenda item, it's inferred that we're gonna be going back, because that was part of the backup? Okay, great, thank you. All right, so counsel, that takes us to agenda number 10. Uh, consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the land development code, creating sections 150.118 through 150.129 for short-term rental registration regulations under zoning land use. Uh, counsel, this will be a continuation of our discussion from the work session. Um, as we went through the items, uh, and took notes, we are on section 150.120, short-term rental registration requirements. The, uh, I believe that we'd gotten to a discussion where it was requested that we include the, the trade name, if applicable, as well as any registered agents, as part of the information that's provided from the registration. Um, and we had moved on to a discussion about agenda, or number 13 under that section, which is the registrant shall provide a copy of the filed comptroller of public accounts form, AP 102, Hotel Occupancy Tax Questionnaire. And regardless, I think, in terms of, um, we, one of the purposes of this regu-, you know, having the registration is to, you know, ensure that, uh, you know, hotel taxes being properly paid, you know, if there are short-term rentals. I think there is this disconnect between these, uh, these eight groups, like Airbnb or, uh, other groups that may, uh, infer or collect that tax, but not necessarily match up against our receipts. That is a separate, you know, discussion that needs to be had, in terms of, like, how do we follow up with those groups to ensure that we're getting payment? And then it just becomes a matter of, okay, what is the registration requirement, um, to ensure that, um, there's acknowledgement that this is being paid? I, I wonder if the, you know, part of the discussion here is whether we have them provide a copy of the filed comptroller of public's account form, or something from, like, Airbnb, for example, that says that they are, you know, listing this with Airbnb, and that's how they're gonna be collecting it. I, I don't, that, that's kind of trying to figure out if there's like some sort of compromise where it's like, okay, I'm, I'm an Airbnb resident, you know, right, person, they're collecting it for me, do I need to go down and regi-, you know, file separately? Or can I provide some, you know, uh, information from my Airbnb contract as a short-term rental owner that would allow the city to go back and collect that, right? So I, I don't know what the right, you know, registration is, but I think we wanna have some way of matching this rental property with what our receipts are, so that we can go back to the responsible party, whether that's the person or the Airbnb. And I don't know if we wanna be the people in the middle of, you know, having to go to Airbnb to collect this, or going to the, you know, the, the person saying, "Airbnb's not paying us, it's up to you now to go and, and work with them to get an insured proper payment." Councilor Lishell?
Yeah, so since this is a state tax collected by the state, enforced by the state, dealt with by the state, that eventually gets routed to us, what if we just say, give them like a checkbox that says, "I understand," like, it's similar to the one above, where it says, "Um, I'm acknowledging that hotel occupancy taxes will be deducted or collected for this," or whatever. Because I don't think we can enforce it at all. Like, that is so outside our jurisdiction, it's a Texas state's tax, so why don't we just say-
No, it is, it comes to us, why, why can't we enforce it?
Oh, 'cause we're not- Of that questionnaire. But I don't need to fill that form out if I'm just using Airbnb, because Airbnb will route the money direct, correctly.
Then you can just ask Airbnb to please send me verification, you know, please send me the form. Because what if they're sending it to, like, Austin and not Sunset Valley?
Yeah. And that may be something that Sunset Valley just needs to ask Airbnb or something, I don't know. This is like, it went to the state comptroller, the tax was paid. The fact that, like, somehow there's a disconnect in the plumbing between Sunset Valley and the state, Texas comptroller, I don't, I don't wanna get in that mess. I, I don't know.
Councilor Reese?
I will, so, just a comment, so this is, even on the most basic, like, when you have a very short, like, some other cities really short checklist or very, you know, th- this is always on there.
Okay, how about if instead of this-
It's very common.
So what the city administrator's doing right now, how about if instead of this, she fill, pulls up that form? And we can just look at it and say, "Is this a scary form or not?" Like, that would actually be super helpful.
I'm trying to look at it right now.
Like this AP 102 Hotel Occupancy Tax Questionnaire. So like, let's see if that's doable in a couple minutes, because all I'm trying to do is reduce friction.
Councilor Johnson, while we're looking up the, the form.
Is that, is there, is the fact that we get money the only fact that we have that this has been rented? Because, like, we're not asking them to list anything, all, all we know is that they got the permit, and then, dot, 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 then one day, money shows up. So, if this is the only way to know, then it's like, it is an important checkbox to be like, "Hey, you know you gotta pay taxes, right?"
Right.
Your mailing address, if you're a corporation or an individual.
Will you keep scrolling down there?
Legal entity, where you're doing business, if you did business somewhere else and you sign it.
Cool, looks good, thanks.
Not on the first then, okay, very good.
Okay, so, the note here is that we wanna provide that evidence, and at least it, it's okay to keep that in, and we can move on, okay? All right, moving on to section 50, 150.12- All right, moving on to section 150.121, inspection required for short-term rental registration. The notes that we have here are striking, I guess I should read out the, well, actually I'll open this up since we can see the version that's here. Councilmember Johnson, do you want to speak?
I'm sorry, is it still better to follow the work session documents?
Yeah, so we're following the, the version that has the edits so we can follow along. So-
The checklists on, the strikeouts on item A. It's kind of redundant and we agreed to the STR checklist, assuming we're, we don't have any issues with that.
Okay, so staff's okay with that strikeout? Any questions from council? Okay. Moving on to section 150.122, restrictions on short-term rentals. Councilmember Rosengard?
Before we leave 150.121, number one, it says if only a portion of the premise is offered for rent, then that portion plus shared amenities and points of access shall be inspected. When you later go down to 150.126, they're inspecting everything, the garage, storage areas, et cetera. So it conflicts with this, so I just want everybody to have that attention. When we get to 150.126, I am going to ask that we say this and only this.
Yes, and, and that is intended to be it. For example, somebody who's registering the room above their garage, that's going to be inspected, not the main house if they're not renting the main house.
Okay. All right. One, section 150.122, restrictions on short-term rentals. The strikeout that's here is on number E6. So Councilmember Litchfield suggested strikeout is to operate, to the section that says to operate more than one short-term rental property at any one time. So maybe start with Councilmember Litchfield in terms of this specific item.
This came from one of the resident comments at some point. I don't recall exactly who. But there are people, I guess, to my mind, there's operate, which is a weird word. Is it have it for rent? Because if I have like my main house and my ADR like listed at the same time, then I can only like rent one of them at a time? Like, maybe that was confusing a little bit? Or-
Can I, so I can provide some background. The zoning commission specifically added this in, in our discussions, you know, over many months. And they, the thing, their thought process was if you have a guest house that you're using and then you try to rent out, you know, another, to another leasing, you know, the main house, and then there's a code violation, you know, you show up, like who's, who's doing what? So it's, you know, one, it's the entire property is the short-term rental. You can't have multiple short-term rentals on one property. Like, let's say you have three, you know, three separate buildings, you know, because we have up to three accessory structures, you can't have multiple, multiple-
Two, like two airstreams and a house and a barn.
Right, yeah, airstreams are not allowed according to this ordinance, but yeah, so one, so the property itself is the short-term rental. Now, you can be on, you can be onsite and rent out, you know, rent out, but you can't have multiple rentals on one property. That was their-
Can I rent out my main house Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and my ADR on Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
So operate means have a tenant?
Yeah, I would see, if we, we could wordsmith that, but yeah, operate meaning you're renting, you're renting out to some, to someone. So you can't have multiple, basically you can't have multiple tenants on the property at the same time.
Can I do that if I own the property and there are longer-term rentals?
No, that's what I'm going to say. That's not something that's allowed by our residents right now. We have a limit on who's staying where on the property. You, you can stay in that airstream, but it's a very limited time and it is for family members, et cetera, et cetera. So we have very specific regulations for our residents. Is this to say we're going to open the regulations more for STRs for non-residents? I mean, that's also things to consider if we're trying to keep the playing field level. The second thing that was discussed the last time is renting out rooms in your home. Boarding houses are not allowed in the zoning ordinance, so maybe that's a give where you modify the zoning ordinance language on the definition of a boarding house.
So it sounds like six, we've already got our bases covered, so we don't need it. Like, you just cited two different ways where the two cases are already covered by existing regulation, so we don't need to add a new regulation. I like deleting extra code.
I think it's better to clarify it than to assume folks know that they have, like, the complaint that we have currently is the two airstreams and home.
Which is already against code. So like, they're in violation of existing code, so we don't need a new law to take care of that. So-
Actually, no, they could say it's a family member living in the airstream or staying in the airstream. So it's clearly stated is much better than just vaguely stated somewhere in the code. Especially when it is in reference to what they're trying to do.
Is the, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the, it would still just be one permit per property, right? So like, yeah, if you run X number, you're just kind of like increasing your exposure to kind of like losing that permit, right? So do we really care how many they do? Does anyone?
Say it again.
Well, it's like, if you have three different people that are all short-term rentals, but it's like, you're not, you're not going to just, if that one in the back is causing the issues, it's not like you're going to lose one and you can still run two more. It's like, this property has one permit. Do we need to call that out further? Am I misinterpreting what this is going after?
So, and it's members on a permit, so the registration is per, so you have registered your property as a, you know, short-term rental. So is that what you're getting at? So-
Well, okay, so that clarifies that it's like, we don't have to, it's like, it is for this property.
Yes.
So, yeah, probably number six. It's more money.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm kind of thinking just to eliminate number six. I'm kind of thinking that in like Sharon, your case, if you went on vacation, you could rent out your personal home if you wanted, plus your rental. And there may be other people like that, but this would say you couldn't do that.
Sorry. And again, this was the zoning commission's recommendation. This was not staff's recommendation. This was the recommendation by the zoning commission. So you, you know, but-
So let's say that a company decides to have their, their meeting in one of these houses and they're doing short-term rentals. And they have three couples who are part of this company who are partners. And each one rents another bedroom, but they rent it as the company name. Is that allowed?
Yes.
Because it's one entity.
That's allowed.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about being able to rent, let's say same company is now in the STR business, rents the house to one person, rents the guest house to another person, and rents whatever granny flat or whatever else is on the property to another person.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
So I think Councilmember Johnson and Reitz and I are in support of just removing six.
Yes.
Because again, like, there could be problems, but why take away rights without problems?
Yeah.
Like, if once there's violations, we can take that away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you step far away and it just becomes like paperwork. Then it's just like, you don't know that it's like three separate people.
That's right.
Okay, so I'm going to take a note down that there's an option for us to consider as we're, as going through the proposed language to keep that removal. All right, any other questions on section 150.122? All right. Section 150.123, brochure and safety features for short-term rentals, that's recommended by Councilmember Litchfield to strike this entire section, not requiring a brochure and leaving that up to the individuals managing the short-term rental. Councilmember Rosengard?
I agree with, with less is better, but at the same time, this was my favorite section. This gave, it was like a checklist for the tenant to say, okay, these are the things that you need to be aware of.
Just a question for staff, like in terms of like the zoning discussion about this one, can you kind of tell us the background about where this portion of the regulation or the registration process came from?
It is, it was to be as less intrusive to the surrounding neighbors as possible. If folks know where to go for trash, where to call, where things are, it is so that the trash can isn't left out on the curb, for example, for extended period of times, or cars aren't parked on the curb, or, you know, where, where things are supposed to be. It really was to inform and it really was to be as, as though that place is invisible and they're operating the same way a resident would operate.
Again, they, they sort of, the dividing line with this one is that Reese, people who are interested in probably a good experience for their guests are going to have this type of thing as a baseline. And it just becomes a question of is this something that the city wants to, you know, have them do as part of this registration? Councilmember Johnson?
I was, I was going to address Councilmember Rosengard's, your comment earlier in the work session. Would you maybe, the word brochure seems, should we simplify that pamphlet? I don't know. It could be really simple. It doesn't need to be a printed brochure. Yeah, I don't, we could find a different word that's not so-
Yep. It could be a sheet framed on the wall, you know, one page of paper.
Right. All right, something less expensive.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, yeah, the, some of the things that we are, I would like to see a thing that is like not part of necessarily the regulations, but it's like for each side of the, I want to rent and I don't want to live next to a renter or a rental, it's just like, these are the danger points. Like, these are the things that are going to get your permit restricted, and if you live next to one, these are the things that you can look at and bring an issue about. Like, I, I know if you are the city administrator, then you probably know all of these things, but I would not know these things. I know it's like, oh, loud music passed sometime. I don't even know what our time is in Sunset Valley. But does that fit in here? Or where does that kind of, if I was to go find a checklist of all the things that would put my permit in jeopardy?
So, so for example, pertinent neighborhood information in the villas, you shouldn't park on this side of the street. Your trash needs to be rolled in by this side of the street. Your trash should be bagged. If you're going to be there for extended periods of times, or you're having a party or need special dispensation to dump, we have a dumpster available. If there are certain things that you're going to need access to, here's where it is. Here's how you get hold of our police. Here's the emergency contact information. Really, that's what it was meant for, to make sure that they incorporate and they know the same rules that our residents have to operate by.
And it's basically the responsibility of the registrant to get that information to the tenant.
Yes, the idea was that we as staff create like a how-to packet, and, you know, when they register, here you go. Make sure this is prominent. Or even if we just give it as a QR code and it's on their, you know, stuff, that here you go, this is where it is on the website, this is how you know you're supposed to get around Sunset Valley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Litchfield?
So two things on that, and I think Rob was kind of alluding to this. Well, I guess three. One, people should have these brochures. Airbnb's like, this is how you make an amazing guestbook. Show them your favorite restaurants. Show them how to not get in trouble with the neighbors. People should do this. So then it comes to me as like enforceability. So like, who's going to go in and inspect my house every time before I have a short-term rental to make sure that brochure is there? And if it's not enforceable, then why are we going to make a law? And then two, like, and then like also this placard part is weird to me. I don't know what a placard is. I don't know why I should be able to like-
Metal plate on the house saying who the owner is and everyone knows.
Yeah, so I would not like require a placard. And, and then, but then what you said, like, the city will provide you a helpful brochure that maybe you want to leave for your guests. I'm totally down for that. But I would not make it like, we're going to revoke your license if you don't make a brochure of the right style available to your people.
No, not at all. The-
Then why?
The idea for this has always been-
You can't make it a requirement if it's not enforceable.
The idea for this has always been that they have the information readily available. And if you really go look at enforcement and you really go look at it, it takes a long time before anything is issued. Because you still have to go through due process. Somebody, just because somebody makes a complaint, just because the person that stayed there says the brochure wasn't there, and they want to complain because they want to get out of payment, that's, that's not what this is for. This is for more so the people who are surrounded by the STRs, so that that STR is almost invisible. So those folks are acting as a Sunset Valley resident. They know when to take out the trash, they know not to have the noise, they know where to call police, they know where our offices are, they know where they need an extra dumpster. I, I mean, if you want to take it out, that's fine. It's less work for city staff.
Councilmember Johnson, then Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, again, like maybe it doesn't have to be in there, but I, in kind of like, you, you want to be treated like a big kid and rent out your property, but it's like, when somebody, we really want you to see this so that like, when you say, I didn't know, it's like, tough luck. Now you know. Register again in three years, you know? So it's like-
The owner's already going to get enforced against. Like with, with or without the brochure. Like, if their tenant is throwing loud parties and not taking out the trash, the owner's going to get in trouble. Why do we have this brochure as a strict enforceable requirement? I just don't get it.
Like, I, you know, if it's like, however much you pay, you know, it's just like, here's a piece of paper, throw it in the trash for all I care, but you will, you have taken receipt of this like little brochure about like the things that we do in Sunset Valley. So take it, throw it in the trash right there, or just hand it back to us, but like, you know, you can't say that we didn't tell you. Yeah?
Mayor Protem?
Yep. I, I think then, if we try to go line by line, we will have a lot of discussion, and I don't think that is productive. When I came to Sunset Valley in 2007, they gave it to me a paper, and they say, this is the plants that you can have, these kind of plants. So I have a list of plants. That was a regulation that they gave it to me. They say you have three trees on the back, no, two on the back and three on the, on the front. You cannot cut them. If you try to do something, you need to check with the staff and with the city. So at this moment, some people, they don't have two trees, they have six. The plans that they gave it to us, they ignore that. Now we have other species in plants, then they no need to be there, but we brought them. Why? No enforcement. So if at this moment we try to be picky with the enforcement or no, first, it's a person responsibility. So as a person, I have some duty with the environment and with my other citizens. So I need to cut the grass, I need to respect this. If at this moment it's stage one, I don't need to be wasting water, but this is I. But the rules, they are in black and white. So my suggestion again, I can go line by line and by line. And the staff in one moment say, just forget it, you are city council, you decide whatever you want to do. We are employees. In order to do this, some committee, some zoning board of adjustment, staff, so we have a lot of time doing this. We need to start with something. If at this moment, we're still cutting and cutting and cutting, and we are not moving, I don't believe that we will accomplish too much. And with all respect, we have some difference, but in one moment, come on, we need to go to the point, how many houses at this moment, they don't have additional impermeable cover? How many houses, perhaps they have animals, and not necessarily they are with the ordinance? And nobody enforce? So we need to be realistic, how we are- So, we need to be realistic, how we are and how we respect the rules, everybody. So please, if I don't put too much, it's because I am up till here, because I have so many days that we work with this. So, if in reality, they say, well, we are three people in the table, X, Y, and Z, and we agree with number seven, erase it. Well, why not Y, Z, and T, and also they can include P, decide what do you want, and I will go with that. Thank you.
Second, yeah, and I think, just to remind us where we're at in this, Council, is that what we want to get to, I think, is a process that allows us to better manage this, and we have, you know, making it, on the one hand, balancing the need for lightweight registration to encourage compliance, right? So that we have, you know, these groups or these entities in the system to better track them and to better, you know, help the neighborhoods where these are. I would also say that we can begin with a process and amend it, right? If we find that we need to put more into it, or we need to remove components of it. I don't think that there is any disagreement I've heard from the standpoint of having the ability to enforce this, right? You know, having the ability to say, we need to have a contact, we need to have a way to manage this better than what we do now, right? Something that we don't have a viewpoint into some of these areas or these properties. And I think we can get there, you know, in terms of where we start, because we can always make it, make it changes, you know, based on the responses to the needs of the residents, the needs of the rights of the property owners. I think in this case, you know, if there's, we had to get to a point where we can take a majority vote, you know, just and proceed. We, I think there's been consensus on at least a majority of changes that, you know, we've come up with. You know, in this case, the brochure item being one of these areas where, you know, I think it's something that, it's not critical to having, you know, this process in the core of it. However, you know, I think there's benefits to at least the city presenting with information to say, this is the basics, right? You know, so that they can pass that on to the people, so there's not a later point in time saying, well, I didn't know, right? Whether that's something that we have to say, they have to have that information in a certain format or not, I don't think there's any need to do that. I think it's just more of, here's the city thing, you know, listed that you need to be aware of, and you should be providing this to your residents. But, you know, I think that's up to them to then, as part of this process, know that this is the conditions. They can, we can live with not, that information being conveyed without having to verify that it's in a certain format. So, that being said, this section, I would say, if we wanted to include something in here, it's just more of a, the city providing, you know, these are the safety features for, you know, the information and safety features for short-term rentals that, you know, the city recommends, you know, providing to the renters. And we can leave it off of the inspection, right? That may be the compromise. But, Council, further discussion on this item? Because I think in this case, like if we, if the change was we just, as far as the proposed inspection, we didn't have the verification of brochure? Is that, well, it's number four, I think, on the general inspection? If you scroll down to the general inspection list that you have just added there? Number three, verifying the information packet is prominently displayed as required in the ordinance. So, I would say just, you know, not including that, but we listed in the ordinance, you know, listed in the ordinance here as is.
Well, as is, it says, require that they will provide, that shall provide to guests a brochure. And I think that where we're kind of happier is that there will be a brochure provided to the registrant, and we suggest that they give that to their tenants, but, I don't know. Also, just in this, like, if we could just strike out, let's see, this one's a weird section. Sorry, so there's the whole brochure bit, which is A and B, and that's kind of what we're talking about. I would like to just strike that whole part. There's a placard, which is C, which is, I think that's kind of silly, like, I just don't support that. And then D is like, where is that coming from? That's like, there's two different places where we already described this, and so why is that in the brochure section of this? So I think that's just like, that was just a typographical error, I'm sure.
Again, it's sharing of information early on before it...
That other information was for, you know, this is for tenants' use and that and...
But D doesn't like logically follow, like it just is out of place. It's, yeah.
So is, I guess I'm getting confused here, is this something the city is going to prepare, like a list of city regulations? Or is this something the tenant prepares?
This is something the city would prepare, and it's given to them as a registration packet, with their registration packet, and it should be prominently displayed in their...
It could be a notebook, it could be a frame, it could be whatever that is. But the city would prepare, so there's not a lot of work from the thing. And I think that's an important thing, I mean, I have a, you know, I have a second, like a little cottage, and you can't park on the street or the police will give you a ticket, so I have to tell all my guests this. And so there's, those are things that, you know, each city has its own regulations, and so we should be telling them what our city regulations are, particularly like trash and things like that, so.
I wrote city created, I'm sure it could be wordsmith much better, but that was the intent, is...
Yeah, I'm okay with that. As long as it's prominently displayed, it doesn't have to be a placard or whatever.
Councilmember Johnson?
Well, I would just make sure that information gets to the person who's registering it. If they don't want to give that to the people renting, then that's their problem.
We struck it off the inspection line.
Yeah, 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 so, that's why, I've kind of like inverted my thinking on this, which is just like, I don't know. If people want to open their exposure to like losing this, then fine, it'll be like a bummer in the meantime for the neighbors, but like, it might be the, and that's why like, the next one will come back for me.
And just as a point of information for the residents, I would like to get through the council discussion of the entire packet, and then we'll open it up for public comments. So please keep your specific notes about which section you want to... All right. Councilmember Litchfield?
Sorry, but like, this is like, this is a law we're writing. Okay, so now, so what if I don't like the font that the city used, and I want to create my own brochure that has all the same information, plus more, plus like my favorite restaurants?
Who cares?
So then why do we have this section at all? No, like, this is just like a weird, so like, I don't know, like required to provide this, like, we, like, the incentive, so we can align everybody's incentives, which are like, we want to have good renters. These are things that we think will be like, like we'll make sure everybody's incentives are aligned. We've got a lot of like guardrails in place to make sure that as people vary from them, we can kind of knock them back into place. Totally get it. The minutia of this, though, I just don't, I think we're just overcomplicating it.
You know, I don't mind having a little bit of a threshold for a person to get through, because it tells them that, one, the city takes this very seriously, and we expect them to. It's not just a fly-by-night, you can't just be renting to anybody, because you have neighbors on either side, we need to respect. We want these STRs to be invisible, basically. And they want, you know, Sharon does a great job, she operates it, nobody really knows, you know? And so that's the way they all should be, but that's not the case. And so unfortunately, you have to have that. Any business has tons of things, loopholes, paperwork, all sorts of stuff that you have to do. So, this is not a huge thing, that the city gives you a brochure about the city rules, please display this or have it available for your guests, that's it, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, and, you know, if a resident is, you know, whether they're renting or not, you know, they'll call the city and they'll, you know, maybe set up a utility account, or, you know, they'll have access, or they'll call the city and have information. But Councilmember Reed's made a point that, you know, this is operating a business, you know, and it's people coming in and could potentially, people coming in and out, and so, it's giving, it's just, you know, we're hoping that you, the operator will provide your tenants the information that they need to operate safely, to, you know, not disturb their neighbors.
At one point, we're considering separate rules for owner occupied, because obviously, she has better people who follow the rules, because she's there and nips it in the bud, and everybody on zoning commission said that. Anytime there is an issue, they contacted Sharon and she nipped it in the bud. Some of these are not owner occupied, the one next to Mr. Carmona is not owner occupied. Some of these were folks leave out of the country or not owner occupied at that time. A lot of this is there because they really should be invisible. We are after all talking about residential zones where a business is occurring.
Councilmember Rosengarten, then Councilmember Johnson?
I think, and I hope I'm not wrong, I'm gonna clarify what Councilmember Litchfield is saying. This is actually a list being created by the city for the landlord to give to the tenant. So, I'm a landlord, there is no city that I have rental property in that gives me a brochure to give to the tenant. I do it, I make sure my tenant is informed of what my rules are and what the city rules are, period. Three-ring binder, plastic sleeves, papers in each one showing all the rules and regs for the property, done. It's not on the city. You're gonna have to create a brochure with the registrant's name and information. So are we taking this to the printing company to do, or are we just giving them a piece of paper, or what?
No, the plan is, there's a standard, just like you would find in a hotel, here's your standard, here's evacuation route, here's your call, here's whatever. The person who's registering, they take that, they fill their name on the front of it, and period. I mean, I think you're overcomplicating it on the dais. Again, it really is to be helpful. We're not gonna go into what Sunset Valley does versus what other cities do, Rudy, because trust me, we're a unicorn in that world. This really is because at the end of the day, we're going to be the ones that are called. And from the perspective of, did you know when the trash was coming? You know, don't put it out there, you gotta put it back, okay? Make sure that your tenants know that. It really is to help nip things in the bud, as opposed to letting something proliferate and continue to create problems down the line.
Totally understand.
Councilmember Johnson?
I could have done that before I turned my mic on, sorry. So, again, I feel like this brochure should be just something that where it's like, when you get your permit, you just like sign, it's just like, I have received this thing of, this list of things that could put my permit at risk. Again, whatever they do, then that's kind of, it's a silly move on their part, but they could do it. And if it's removed from the, if, you know, seen it as removed from the inspection, then again, it's like, it doesn't have teeth anyway. So, with all due respect to all the conversation, at what point can we, and I'm not saying we do this, but like, if we get to like kind of like a loggerhead on one of these things, can we just like vote and move it on? I know you wanted to say something, but like...
Yeah, and we can, and I just ask Barbara, I guess Barbara, just a question about how we might structure this vote before we're at this kind of like, whether we can do all or none, or if we can do section by section, right? So could we do something where it's approved section, first section by, and then move to the next section, approve that section? Can we break it up like that, or is it, do we have to kind of go through the whole ordinance all at once?
If you're intending on completing this tonight, you can go section by section. I think it gets complicated if you think that you might not get through the whole thing.
Right.
But the way you're going through it, I, you know, I don't have any issue.
Well, I mean, for example, could somebody make a motion and say, I approve section this with this language, and we vote on that section? And then we proceed like in that fashion?
I mean, you can break it up like that.
So that's one way we could, you know, essentially break loggerheads in that case is, you know, if we can't come to consensus where it's, you know, after we go through the whole document, and then there's a number of like varying edits, so.
So after Wanda speaks, maybe we'll, maybe we'll draw the line there, and maybe we'll make a motion to vote just on this one.
I was just gonna say, really quickly, like, someone like me who might rent their house out for two weeks out of the whole entire year, this would be really nice, that I don't have to create it myself, that I don't really, I don't have the experience to create it, I don't really think of everything, if it's done for me, woo, that is so nice, I love it. I'm saying keep it, but just make it just...
We took it off the inspection.
Yeah, that's fine. But keep, but still, the city can still hand it out to the applicant and give it to them.
Yeah, I support that totally. There's just a shall provide language, like shall provide to guests. Like that to me means if I don't hand it to them, or they don't see it, then I could lose my license. So, should provide, may provide, the city will provide you a helpful brochure.
The language, if we're intending for the city to provide this, I don't think the section was originally written with that perspective. I think it would just be, section A, the city shall provide each short-term rental a list that includes...
Cool, so city shall provide.
Right, these.
That's great.
Safety features, that has to stay in there, because we want to make sure that safety features are enforceable, they're part of the inspection.
Yep.
The section C goes away, and then the listing of information would be under D, or the current D would be under, subject to under A.
Yeah, I would put D under five, that's what, that's kind of my thought there, because it seems weird, like...
Yeah, the last one would just be, part of the information the city provides to the rental.
Yay. This seems like something that could grow, because there's nothing about, the things that put the permit at risk are, anything that a resident could also...
Right.
And then above, Sylvia, I think under the language for A itself?
So, we just print out the, the, not land of, the, our list of ordinances, it's like, here you go.
Go read.
Yeah, we could do. Or here's a link to the code ordinance website.
Light reading.
Mayor Protim?
Well, to ours, with all of this down, I got it. Looking B, safety features. So, why is the city responsible? Because in that case, if some equipment is not working, we have liability, the city. That is in B, and it's not our responsibility, it's responsibility of the renter. So, in that area, I don't believe, I'm sorry if I try to say some analogy, but this looks like a game when somebody has a questions and answer, and who is faster? And in one moment, the question came, and the other person responds so fast, then say, is the city or is the renter? The renter, yeah, you got it, now is the renter, no, is the, is the city. So, in this subject, in reality, needed to be the renter, not the city. And when we are looking this, it's so simple to have a binder, that we'll give it to you all of these things, and it's simple to request that to the vendor or the responsible or the owner of that property. Now, well, it's because I don't know what type of binder, what kind of color of the binder, and if we start looking more and more and more, we don't advance, it's something simple. This is simple things that they are asking. So, please, look in that way, and I disagree with that B, because that refer with liability. So if the detector and you have a fire, and the renter is talking with the other people, and the insurance, we will go with some complications, and I don't believe that is the city responsible. and the insurance, we will go with some complications, and I don't believe that that is the city responsible.
And it isn't. Councilmember Carmona, that was when we made the change about the city brochure, that safety feature moved up so that the owner shall provide those, not the city.
Registrant, right?
So, okay, so we can, part of this process, let's go through the whole document. I want to see where kind of we're divergent, and we may need to go section by section in terms of motions, if we're getting down to where we don't have strong consensus. For this, I think the consensus is around not having a requirement that there's a, something that the owner has to provide to their guests, but the city is providing information that's covering this, as well as allowing for inspections of the, the smoke detectors. Let's keep moving on. Do you want to, we can always revisit these. I don't want to, you know, force a specific, you know, direction, but we may have to go section by section in our votes. So, section 150.124, notification of approval of short-term rentals. Clear choice in terms of, you know, if this is something that we want to notify the neighbors of when there is a registration, or not. Councilmember Johnson?
It's crossed out on this one, I guess it's a different working copy. I'm a strong supporter of keeping this one in there. Because if everyone's going to be great, then they should be afraid of people knowing that they're there, so.
What did you say?
What's that? I'm a big proponent of keeping that in there, because...
Keep it, okay.
Okay. So I think, well, this is another one we may have a vote on, like a clear vote to see what council member preference is, right, in terms of that section. Yeah.
She was like, just ambitiously rejecting the changes.
She anticipated your feedback. All right. Section 150.125, registration term fees, renewal of short-term rentals. What we have here is the proposed term changing from one year to some period, two years. I know I talked about potentially three years in order to make this less onerous if we are having a more, you know, upfront process. Councilor Rosengard?
On 1B, a late fee of twice the established fee, and if the established fee was, what was it? $250? Okay, because there's another fee later that's $2,000, and then that can double, and I'm going, wow. Okay. Okay, so 250 going to 500. I had 500.
Well, 250 is the proposed fee, it's not, it's not anywhere in this.
Yeah, we never talked about that yet. Okay. I would look at the proposed fees.
Okay, and is there any preference or consensus on the term of how long the registration should be valid for? Keep in mind that you can always be pulled from your registration, but just in terms of like, how often you had to go through this process that we're describing in terms of providing contact information, sketches, inspection, allowing inspection.
Two is good.
Two years.
Yeah, I like the two years.
All right, we seem to have consensus on that. All right.
All right, we agree.
All right, section 150.126, everyone's favorite. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well...
Okay, yeah, other parts of that one, I got it, sorry.
What's the, what's a late fee? Just like, you're running one, and then, then you get caught?
Well, we, it says it may include the following, so we would have to establish that as part of this ordinance, where we wanted to have a late fee, and, you know, when the violation would essentially be. So if we put in, for example, that you, you know, when you're registering, you pay a fee, and if you don't pay a fee within 30 days, that we could set that, and that would be, and then we said you'd, you'd be twice of whatever your initial registration fee is. I think that's, that's as part of like, the fee structure, we want to determine like, what constitutes late? What is a prompt payment, and what's a late payment?
Could we say?
Councilor Rosengard?
Could we say on 1B, a late fee of twice the established registration fee? Just get rid of the "the."
Before you say that, are you...
This one has some discretion. It says may include. Obviously, we had the discussion about people are out of town, they weren't able to get to the registration. Again, not meant to be punitive, meant to track, meant to know who's here, who's in the city.
I'm trying to get rid of the typographical error, that's all.
The established registration fee.
Get rid of the "the."
The "the."
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're, this is somebody that's just like, eh, fish me, I'm renting it out.
Yep.
But like, I don't know, like twice? She's, she's up and she's looking at it.
No, I was, I can't see.
Oh, okay.
What is the fee?
I don't know, it's just like, well, whatever it is, but the thing is like...
We discussed that it was approximately.
Proposed.
So the double, the double would be 500.
What's to stop someone from just like, I mean, it's not that much money, but what's to stop you from just renting it until you get caught? It's like, oh, I'm late. It's like, yeah, you're three years late.
Yeah, and that may very well happen.
All right.
I think then, Rob, the, the house, then I was looking, they rent that for 830, 840 dollars per day. So, they are always two days or three days, the weekends. So what is 250 for them? If they are making over $4,000, $5,000?
It's like so ridiculously small that it's just like, I don't know, can you just say like, if you run it, if you rent an unpermitted, then it's like, you don't get a permit. And after so many years, you can like come back. I mean, it's like, what is to stop people from like, just not even registering, or getting permitted? You know, I, to me, like, a late permit is the same as just saying, I don't want to do any of this stuff. I'm just going to rent it.
Well, sometimes a late permit is because you didn't have time, you have an accident, you forgot.
You had time to like, do everything you else you have to do in order to rent this thing out, except go down to...
Amen.
Yeah, it's like...
So, failure to register is a $2,000 offense, per day.
And what's a late registration?
Yep. I mean, there's, there's... Again, my registration was due on the second. I was out of town, I was at a funeral, I was, you know, whatever. Not just I chose not to register, and it is May.
I, you're going to find a lot of people that are just like, whoops, it's like, okay, I guess you're late. You know what I mean? I don't know. So, it's like, that, if, if I'm looking at it like, someone that's gaming the system right there, oh, you caught me, here's twice the fee, instead of $2,000, I don't know. Is anyone else, am I, do I just have like such a cynical view of humanity? Yeah, okay.
I think the distinction, in my mind at least, is that they've registered, they just haven't paid the fee, right? So they provided all the information, they've allowed the inspection, all those things, you know, as part of the registration process, if we allow inspections, right? But that, they're in the process, they just haven't paid their fee. That means that at some point, their fee increases, you know, and whether double is the right amount or not, that's, that's to be determined. If they never register, they never allow inspections, they never, you know, do anything at all, and they're operating short-term rental, then they're subject to the violations, which is a $2,000 a day violation every day that they're not registered. So there's, that's the distinction in terms of what I think this language is getting at, in terms of registration, paying the registration fee, or not even registering at all.
I'm sorry to slow this up. For, for me, that is just something where it's just like, you throw it, I was like reading through this, like, through the, the thing for the ballistics class and stuff like, it's like drug-free workplace, it's like, yeah, drugs are illegal, like murder's also illegal, like murder-free work, you know, so this is like the thing where it's just like, you, you aren't registered until you pay the fee.
Sure, yeah, right, so the registration is incomplete, they're not, and there's no, there's... Right, yeah, so there's no late fee, it's like, the registration, you're in violation. You can't operate until you pay the fee, right?
Yeah.
I think that makes more sense.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then, so I think we would just make sure that that's, there's no loophole there for saying, oh, I'm in the process of payment, the check's in the mail, you know, and I'm operating my short-term rental for months and months and months, and then the only is a slap on the wrist by paying the old fee, so.
Okay, does this make more, because we, so there, there will be a renewal fee, obviously, so, okay. Or do you not, I mean...
Yes.
Yes, a renewal fee, for, to pay for the inspection.
Councilor Litchfield?
So, B1 feels weird to me. So if like, the registrant has violated any city ordinance ever, then they may not get their registration renewed by the, like, at the city administrator's sole discretion? That seems pretty onerous. Two seems like a really good clause, where it says, there have been grounds for suspending. So it's like, have they violated these rules? Like, that seems reasonable to me. But if it's like, I accidentally watered my lawn last Friday, like, that's, like, I wouldn't, I, I would hesitate to grant that much power to...
Has violated means they've gone to court and been found guilty.
Okay, for violating, for watering my lawn four times, right? But like, it could be like something totally out of band. So one is fine, but I would just strike two, because that seems unrealistic, it's irrelevant, or maybe irrelevant, I don't know, but it seems inappropriate.
So where, where, when does it become a problem? Where does the teeth, where do the teeth kick in?
So, so look, so this say, may deny the renewal if they have violated these rules in this article. That's two. So if we just omit one, because, like, if we just pretend one had never been there. That says, at the city administrator's sole discretion, if they find that this person has violated the short-term rental rules, they may not renew the registration. That's plenty of teeth for me. That other thing was scary, weird, I don't know.
I'll remind you that although it's at the city administrator's discretion, they still have appeal to the board of adjustment, so I'm not the final.
Oh, yeah, understood.
Yeah.
And are they allowed to operate during the appeal process? All right, so that may be another area where we want to have a majority vote, to move forward on language in that section. Anything else on section 150.125? All right, everyone's favorite, the inspection. Section 150.126, inspection, reinspection, suspension, and revocation of short-term rental registration. So, the first part of this is about inspections. And then, consequences, for example, of not meeting or complying with provisions are also in this section as well. And so, again, I think that part of the discussion that we had last time was whether we want to have a process where city staff goes in and verifies components of the registration, such as, you know, for safety and compliance with, you know, the number of bedrooms that have been noted, or if we want to take a completely hands-off approach, or if there's some middle ground, as far as what would be inspected. The proposed inspection list is something that came back for, as a request from council. One of the things that we would strike off, just in our discussion potentially, is the information pocket. So this would be an inspection that would be verifying the number of bedrooms, the parking space, number of parking spaces, and then the health and safety inspections. To council, discussion on this section. Councilor Rosengard?
On 150.126, number one, it needs to be changed to match with 150.121.1.
And you're saying, is it A1?
Yes.
Okay, so the right and access to inspect all portions of the premises and structures located on the premises that are not dwelling units, included but limited, unlimited to all storage areas, detached garages, and swimming pools, upon reasonable advance, and this should match anything that's basically being used for the purposes of the short-term rental. So we want to have that language match.
Or struck it out, because it's already talked about.
All right, see, okay, so your staff has, or not recommending, but your staff has made the edit to strike out section one and two with the inspection? So this would be right and access to inspect all occupied dwelling units when upon receipt of violation? So this would be an inspection upon essentially complaint or need to.
That's a code enforcement violation, and typically what we do is inform the property owner before we go on-site. And if we can't get cooperation with the property owner, we do have access and right of access as the building official anyway in the code of ordinances.
So we don't need this?
No, I think we strike out.
You already have that, you already have that, right?
We make attempt to give notice. If notice is not responded to, we have right of entry. Yes. And that's included up above in that A1. Only that portion of the unit that's being rented, that was this one, that's what she raised, A1. Only the portion offered for rent, and shared amenities. So we ended the last time with, we do need to do an inspection, and there was the inspection checklist. It has now striking out the ordinance, and it was verifying the number of bedrooms, that's for occupancy, verifying the parking and the space plan, again, because they're required to have offsite parking, and we want to ensure the impervious cover rules are followed, and folks are parking where they're supposed to park. Smoking detectors, exit doors, don't want people to burn up in the house. Restrooms are in working order, that is a basic. Exposed electrical wiring and fire extinguishers, also a fire hazard, and we've spoke about the importance of fire safety. And doors, locks, and keys, to make sure that things lock, and that's just a personal safety perspective. So minimal inspections as it relates to code for health and safety.
Yeah, are carbon monoxide detectors required?
Yeah.
Yeah, can add that.
And so, I think what the, the staff edits would retain the need to do an inspection before the registration is approved, or before it's renewed. And that would be the section A4, with, would be sufficient to cover the need for the inspection. And then, remaining sections B, C, D, and E would also be retained. So there's a question for council to deliberate on, in terms of needing an inspection prior to the approval of a registration or renewal approval. Councilor Litchfield?
So if we go back to that inspection list, so I had, I took strong issue to the city inspecting the bathrooms to make sure they're in working order. I think that naturally, they should be in working order, but I don't think that the city, like, I think that that's unnecessary. So I would strike three, four, five, and six. Those are all things that are covered by code and permits of, like, occupancy permits and stuff like that, and I don't think we need to add a special new inspection of my plumbing every time, like, because I might Airbnb my house.
We are over protected aquifer, one, two, and we continue to talk about fire hazard. So the electrical and the fire extinguisher, some of these homes may have had a certificate of occupancy a long time ago. Our intent is not to go back and inspect for a certificate of occupancy, but rather where the sleeping quarters are going to be are safe and can be exited.
Sure.
And inspection's not, you said, "Every time I want to Airbnb my house." So it's not, they're not, it's one time or when you renew your registration. So it's not like it's, this is, this could potentially only happen, have to happen once every three, or, yeah, sorry, two years.
Councilor Reed.
Yeah, I like it being specific because if there are other things that you are out of compliance with, you're not inspecting it. So it's very specific, everybody knows exactly what you're looking for.
Other questions, comments from council on this section?
What if, on number six, now I'm just getting detailed. The exterior door locks and a key is provided to open any door that has a lock. What if it's all push?
Key or, you know, mechanism, because, yeah, a lot of, a lot of Airbnbs, I've seen and you use a, you have a code. So a key or mechanism.
Code, yep.
Key or access, mechanism, code.
Councilor Litchfield?
So any door or just ex, hmm?
Exterior doors.
So that, so what is, so if I have a shed, or not a shed, but like a storage room with only an exterior door that I don't want guests to have access to, do I have to provide a key for that to the guests?
No. No, that's your problem.
Okay. Cool.
Of the premises, then. Say, verify the exterior doors of the premises. The only reason I added it is because you were questioning the storage facility with a lock. But that's, all we're talking about is the rental premises. There, in areas that'll be rent, yes.
Were you asking for some to be removed? Were you asking some for, were you asking for some to be removed here?
Oh, yeah, the restroom's wiring and the fire extinguisher's fine-ish, but I think, again, that like opens us up to liability about verifying that it's working, especially where like verifying, working with some of them breaks them. So I don't, I don't know. I, like, I'm kind of uncomfortable with three through six in general.
Just to be clear, we don't have any liability if when we show up, at that point in time, you told us your fire extinguisher is working and you have a little tag on it, that's a checkbox we check. If your house burns down and your fire extinguisher didn't work, we don't have any liability for that.
Okay.
All right. Council, and the object of continuing this and making return to these two, these sections as we vote to approve them or make changes. Section 150.127/ Appeal of Short-Term Rental Registration. There were no edits for this section. Councilor Litchfield?
I would like to propose that the revocation power lay with maybe the mayor. So that the, like, the complaints can be investigated or whatnot by the city administrator, but then maybe the mayor would actually do the revocation, which could, would then be appealed if necessary. But it would just be like another separation of powers that would make me a little more comfortable.
So you would have the mayor?
It's not a you thing, it's just like a...
You would have the mayor recuse himself then at the council because if he had action and it's an appeal that the Board of Appeals, and then it comes here, so he took action, so how would, how would you want that to work?
It's like the revocation for a certain person's permit. Like, somebody is like, you know, like, "We want to revoke the permit of, like, you know, five Sunny Lane" or whatever. I would like the city administrator to make a case, and then the mayor could do that revocation. And then, or council. And then after that, it would be appealed to the Board of Zoning or whatever, or the Board of Adjustments as normal, but I would just prefer a separation of powers there, just because I like separations of powers.
The zoning commission doesn't want to hear these, and Board of Appeals is hearing this.
Barbara having? How should that work? Appeal is already to Board of Adjustment.
Understood.
It, because it goes, there is an appeal that goes to the Board of Adjustment, there needs, the way Board of Adjustment generally acts is because a building official or official of the city has made a decision that is contrary to. I don't necessarily look at the mayor in that capacity. I, I think that if you, if you want to have a different appeal route, I mean, I don't have an objection to having the council be in the middle, but I think you're putting, putting the mayor in the middle of an administrative side of things, and I don't think that's appropriate. I think that the mayor is going to be bringing something to you if there is an appeal of it potentially. I mean, you could have that process go to you all, but I think you have, I mean, you have a city administrator and/or staff. You have an individual who that is designed to do, that aspect of it. And, and making an initial finding that there is something wrong. That's not an unusual task for a city administrator or a building official at that level. I mean, you have, it's at, at an employee level, not at a council level.
Councilor DeZemille, has any strong opinions about the appeal process or the revocation authority?
So I understand it, city administrator or the city can deny it, or deny it, and then they can appeal to the Board of Adjustments. The appeal from the Board of Adjustments is, is what? Is final, or they can sue, go to court. Yes. Okay.
Jonathan?
I, I don't have a problem with the city administrator administrating the city, and can we put the, can we put council in between Board of Adjustments? Or is that just too many?
I don't want to be in there.
Well...
It's a quasi-conditions act, which is why Board of Adjustment has it. There is a right that is quote-unquote "being taken," which is why it ends up in district court without y'all. Trust me, you don't want to end up in a civil rights.
It feels like a big enough decision for the, the weight of that to be on the city administrator, I think, would be, they'd be aware of...
It, it isn't really. It is on the Board of Adjustment who prepares as a court case. So we would do, similar to what Justin's saying, we would prepare the report, we would prepare the defense for why it should be revoked, and then the Board of Adjustment has...
I, what I'm saying is like, if I was a city administrator, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be sending cases to BOA over and over and over again because...
That's normally not how anything works around here. We try to work with the applicant a hundred times over, no matter what it is. Whether it's a three-year-old code violation or whatever, we're still trying to work through some of those. So by the time it gets to Board of Adjustment, or it's because we've really exhausted all efforts in trying to work with this person.
Yeah, so I have no problem with it then.
Any other comments on this section, council? Section 150.127B, violations and penalties for short-term rentals. Again, no suggested edits. Councilor Rosenbaum?
I'm, I'm still on 150.127A.
Go ahead.
My note says to delete E, F, G, H, and add N, I. All decisions of the Board of Adjustments by a majority vote of four-fifths of the board under this article shall be deemed final. Delete E, F, G, H.
Straight from, those are straight from the code right now, defining the Board of Adjustment and its rules and its attendance requirements and how the hearing is held. Those are, those are already listed in our code.
It just felt redundant. It's like, why do we have to say that? We know what the Board of Adjustments does. They have to hear the, the hearing. That's why it goes to a Board of Adjustment.
It also exposes us, if we change that process at some point, we would have to come back and change this ordinance. Otherwise, like, if they get out of sync, that seems like it could be a risk.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
Sure, you could, you could shorten this and say, "Registration may be denied or revoked by the city administrator and appealed to the Board of Adjustment." I mean, you have the three or more violations to discuss, too.
Well, she said like the EF, like she was very targeted on the EF, G, and H.
What was it, Rudy? E, F, G?
G and H.
Which just described the normal workflow that they currently use.
Yes, that's true. That's true. It is currently already listed.
So let's just take EF, G, and H because that's, yeah.
Including H.
Including H, yes.
Now, I will point out that on H, here it says that they cannot reapply for another 12 months, but yet up above reinstatement says, "Any person," that's E in reinstatement, if you go back to 150.126, it says, "Under reinstatement," you're there, "Any person requesting a reinstatement or reissuance of a short-term rental that has been suspended shall be required to apply for and receive a new short rental registration issued under this article upon review by administration department that all conditions causing the revocation have been met." So done. They don't have to wait a year, but down here it says they have to wait a year.
That 12-month period is specific to a Board of Adjustment, a Board of Adjustment appeal. So in item E reinstatement is, we may have shut them down for something. They didn't have a working toilet, whatever. They resolved it, it can be reinstated. There was no appeal to Board of Adjustment at that particular point in time. They weren't appealing that they could operate without a working toilet.
So where are we? Is E, F, G, H okay to be deleted and then add a statement and I?
You were here, E reinstatement.
No, no, no. I was just referring to that because down below it refers to that. Yes, there.
Yeah, the, the striking of those four.
Yes.
Sometimes, because they're just, they're already codified.
They're redundant.
Yep. And then, in my recommendation, it was under I. All decisions of the board, all decisions of the board of adjustments, and then add, "By a majority vote."
Or should we just reference the section of the code with the board's rules so that the board's rules are amended?
Okay. I was going to put in the vote criteria right there so everybody knew that.
Well, that's state law, actually, but...
Okay. Got it. All decisions of the Board of Adjustments shall follow the rules, okay? Whatever that means.
Do we want to reference the...
All decisions of the Board of Adjustments shall follow, related to the board. Okay. Okay.
Anything else on that section? Violations and penalties for short terminals? Any questions about that section?
Yes.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
I was questioning the dollar amount. Violation upon conviction shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $2,000. So the registration fee is 250. The late fee is 250 times two, $500. Sorry? Okay, never mind. So a violation upon conviction shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $2,000 for each offense. So I was recommending in my notes that we do $500, and thus, each day thereafter, it continues to be a violation, a separate offense, if it's $500, within four days, and it's $2,000.
And, and you know, at this point, the, if we're talking about conviction, it's now in muni court. So it's set, you know, whether they go trial by judge, then the judge sets the, the fine amount. If it's trial by jury, the jury deliberates and set the fine amount. So this is just like the maximum number per day. It doesn't mean it will be $2,000 per day, it's, that's the maximum number, that's the maximum penalty per day. The jury's like, "Man, this was a horrible case."
$2,000.
Yeah, a day.
Thank you.
That's what they can do up per day, so.
I didn't know that. Thank you. Love to learn.
Yeah, I'd recommend leaving it in if it's up to the courts to decide the penalty. Anything else on that section? Section 150.128, fees for short-term rental registration. I think it's just determining what the fees are, so we can talk about that separately. Section 1.150.129, presumption, presentation, and documents or an affidavit for short-term rental registration. My interpretation is that we don't need to make changes to this section, it's here for legal coverage, but any updates to this section? Councilor Rosenbaum?
Sorry. In my opinion, B should be striked. And under A, add at the very end, yeah, all of B could be striked, and then at the very end of A, add, "Unless proven otherwise with documentation or affidavits such as contract for deed." Done, simple. There's so much language in B. Yeah.
So Rudy, can you, can you, the language in A, can you just state that? And then I'd like...
So leave everything alone in A and just add "after owner," "unless proven otherwise with documentation or affidavit such as," parentheses, "contract for deed," parentheses. Done.
I would really like to get Barbara's opinion on any changes to this section before we, we make deletions, so, that may require some further study by our, our legal if we're going to be proposing changes.
I'm guessing zoning put this in there.
They did, and I think you tie hands a bit when you start taking some information, you start, you start removing our ability to require certain things to be presented to us. Adjudments, I mean...
But it's mentioned in now, it's mentioned in A.
Do what you want.
No, no, I want to be, I want to give, I want to give staff the muscle they need without giving them too much. So if, if an affidavit is enough language to say a contract of deed, a letter, testamentary, executive contract, document of title, letter of administration, if all that can be cut by just saying affidavit, that's all I'm suggesting. There's too many, too many words in the bottom paragraph.
There's a lot more than an affidavit that would, is mentioned in B. I, I will reiterate, I believe you are tying hands at this point of what the city administrator may ask to see in order to prove something up. And I think it, it could lead to somebody indicating that, well, it wasn't listed here. I just, you know, it's got, it's more than just an affidavit that is listed in B.
I give no problem.
What's the kind of corner case that this is addressing? So it's saying that, so if the, if city shows up and tells an owner, "Hey, you needed to have registered," and the owner and the resident or whatever, the occupant of the property says, "No, it does not need to be registered, and this is why," and then they're expected to come out with a bunch of paperwork. What is that? Like, this seems like it was designed to grab some... Like this seems like it was designed to grab some corner case. And I'm just curious what that could be.
I don't know what, what whole thought was gone, went into who was suggesting this.
Does anybody know?
I mean, from the, from the looks of things here that they are asking for, it is a question of whether the owner or the lessor had the right to allow somebody to rent the property out. Because when you, when you start getting into letters testamentary, executory contracts, letters of administration, that's a, that's an estate, that's probate that you're starting to get into. And so if there's a question as to whether there is an ownership interest, that, that, those are things that, I mean, the, I'm just telling you what I'm reading.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You may not like it. That's why. We don't like lawyers. We know that.
We love lawyers.
But I'm just telling you what these things mean to me when I'm reading it, and that is that there is an absolute, that somewhere, somebody is thinking that there might be a question as to whoever is doing, you know, the rental is now, you know, say somebody has died and somebody has taken over, and they didn't have the authority in that family. Let's just say it's a family dispute.
Sure.
That's where I'm going with this one.
I'm okay to keep it.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, keeping this? All right, no changes. All right, so counsel, a couple of different options, you know, one is to sort of take the, the easy path and say, let's have staff bring back a cleaner version and keep punting it down the line. We could go section by section and vote, you know, on those sections because there's obviously some.
You already did that.
Well, okay.
That's good.
And then, of course, we'll have the public, too. I'm just, you know, trying to get a sense of where, you know, counsel wants to go. I, I think there is, there's a few places where there's still gonna be some disagreement, and that can come out by a vote. If we wanted to take a straight vote over the whole document, as I, what I'd like to do is maybe take a break for staff to finalize the language for, you know, to spend a little bit of time. So I don't want to approve something that hasn't been looked at at least, you know, for the, for, for by staff so that we can get a, a clean edit and then present that and vote on that. If we're gonna go voting on the entire document. I'd rather go that, and I'd like to get that done tonight, so. If we're amenable to that, then what we'll do is open up for public comments, and maybe staff can continue working on, you know, find lines of language, and we'll take a break and. Yeah, what I'd like to do is to take public comments, and then we'll take a break, and then I'll go through with staff, and we can kind of make sure that your, that everybody's notes are in agreement for what we're voting on, so. With that, let's open up for public comments. And please, if counsel wants to, as part of this public comment input process, recommend further changes that we can take into the, to the document that we'll be voting on later tonight.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I'm sorry, I can't do it in the sections because everything moved around too much. So I'm just gonna hit about five points, and we'll have to figure out where, where they go. Apologies. All right, so first thing, I guess I'm not clear enough about management companies and, and in all the places I think they ought to be in terms of, of where that is. The license is, should be to the owner, but then we should have a clear line to whoever the management company is. And I think that's really important, and I'm not sure that we have that covered, so, point. How many rentals can one person or, or, and/or company have in Sunset Valley? And I think that's another thing that I've seen in other cities. I'm, I'm concerned about the threshold for what a complaint is just because I can think of people, I could think about three separate couples just on Pillow Road, that if one of these people had one of these, somebody else would be complaining. I mean, I can see, Sunset Valley has a lot of Hatfield and McCoy things, and if you've been here a while, you could, you can see that coming. So I, I would want to protect the Hatfield and McCoy situations that we could have in the city. And so I, I really would like some really clear language, because I, I could see that. And I know you all could, because you can, you can have your own list. I, I disagree that we should have onsite inspections. I disagree strongly about that. I think that if you do a good enough, and I think plenty of other cities don't do it. I think if you have a good enough map of the house and that, you're covered. You, you say that you have to have the fire extinguishers and where they are and, and the requirements, I think you're done. So I really don't, especially for people who are going to do like, like council member Reese is talking about, have it once a year, and so then you have to have someone transport in your house for, for your two-week rental. I just, no. And so, let's see. So I like two heads per bedroom with two in the living room. That's common in a lot of cities. I, I, I'm concerned about density. I, I know my good friend Sharon will feel differently about that, and I understand that and I respect that. The... I, I guess I said fire extinguishers. One place I know requires two fire extinguishers, and they don't do regular inspections on them, but they do make you have two of them. And I really do like the, the mayor council thing. I, I'm not a fan of the BOA District Court line. I think we keep losing local control, and so I keep seeing staff inserting that, and I'm just gonna say that I'll, I'll argue it because I don't like it. So those are my lists. I think that's, that's everything. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Versace, Pillow Road. Wow, that's loud. Yes, I have a question. Once it is determined that someone's permit should be revoked, and they appeal to the Board of Adjustments, and then the Board of Adjustments denies their new permit or renewal again, so that's two layers of denial. Is that a permanent suspension of a property right that is, it's part of Texas law that you should be able, you have the right to lease or rent out your property? Because that, I believe, I know that's kind of in the works a little bit, but I think that's Texas law.
Right. If it's denied by the Board of Adjustments, then it would be up to the applicant to sue the city, and they would be able to proceed to a, a legal case for the property rights essentially that they were being violated. So that would be the, the course of action, I think, in terms of Board of Adjustments' decisions. Is that correct, Barbara and Sylvia?
Adjustment to the court, to district.
Okay.
That's, that's accurate. You know, unless, unless you change something like, it's not a permanent ban, but, you know, it, if you're, if you're... I'm not seeing a lot of permanent bans, I must say, in STRs. I think it would have to be fairly egregious to get to that point. I, I have seen several cities that actually have it, you know, for a one-year ban, two-year ban. I've never, I, I must say, I, I'm trying to think that if I've ever even seen a permanent ban. I think it would have to be very egregious to have a permanent ban.
Thank you. I, I think that answers my question. I, I think that whoever the applicant is, I would hope would have a chance to make good and have rectify the issues, you know, rather than just be denied, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Drinkwine, 5 Rees. About the, limiting the number of guests according to how many bedrooms there are. Councilmember Carmona makes a good point in that there could be a five-bedroom house in a very tight space. I don't have any solution to how else you could come up with a reasonable number. Perhaps it has to do with the amount of space between you and your neighbors. But I, and, and I also have a question as what, what constitutes a bedroom? Because some people might, you know, put a chest of drawers in a closet and call it a bedroom. So if that could be cleared up, if you are gonna go with limiting the number to the number of bedrooms, I just think that maybe there's a better way to come up with something that is just more fair to neighbors. Because if you have a large expanse of land in between you and your neighbors, you could probably have a couple more people, even though you might have a three-bedroom home than a five-bedroom home in very close contact with their neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. And there, there is a section of the definitions that was added that gives some definition of what a bedroom or sleeping room unit is, as required by the International Residential Code. And I think if, maybe if you can bring that section up, just because it's, that was added after counsel requested that we included definition of what a bedroom is. And so having an egress, having a certain ceiling height, having a minimum size, having a ventilation and window and temperature control and a smoke alarm. But other than that, I don't think it's very, it's not very specific what, what that is. But that, that was one of the issues that was, I tried to identify this, providing a definition.
Thank you. Lisa Pillow Road. So Sharon reminded me, the smoke detector, if you have a studio, couldn't be outside the bedroom, because it says it has to be outside the bedroom. So perhaps there should be an allowance that allows a studio rental to have the smoke detector inside the bedroom. Otherwise, it would be in the bathroom or in a closet or?
Because it's an open bedroom.
Because it's an open space.
Got it, got it. I had to think for a minute.
Yeah. It's a minor, minor tweak. I know that that's building code, but if you only have one room and a bathroom, then it has to be inside the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
She has a studio house, and so that's, that's an issue.
Well, I, I haven't had a chance to read the, the definition of a bedroom, so I guess I don't have much to say until I really read it and, and understand if perhaps I'm being restricted.
She's at Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. She has a studio house, and so she has no walls. And so I'm reading this, and I'm just going, she's got a lot of problems already, and, and, and she's been in existing place here for eight years. And so that's my concern, is that she has, I, I can tell you that since she has no walls there, because I was helping in her house today, that, that, that she's gonna be in violation of this, and it's already in existing. So I think, and she has huge space and, and whatever, but we, we have a lot of unusual houses in Sunset Valley that could be for rent. We don't have like normal tract houses, so I just think we need to be aware of that when we constitute a bedroom. Thank you.
All right, counsel, any further questions before, what I'd like, as I mentioned, what I'd like to do is take a brief break so that I can work with staff to bring back the language that we'll review before taking any votes. Councilor Litchfield?
Yeah, and so my family, we're all in Utah, so we like go to Utah, and we rent houses a lot up in the mountains where they have like bunk rooms with like eight bunk beds in them for kids. And it's like a big house, and it's comfortable, but we always have way more than three people per bedroom, even though it's two adults in each of the bedrooms and then eight kids in the bunk room. And that's like a comfortable, normal, accepted use that I don't think that we should discriminate against. And I understand that it's like, we have a diversity of homes, you know, like that's obviously not the case in the Villas, but we should respect the diversity of homes in the city. And maybe that three heads per bedroom rule is not quite appropriate, although I don't know quite a better one. I just thought of that like glaring counter example, so.
I think it's fine.
All right, counsel, if there's no further questions, I'm gonna work with staff to bring back the document or the final version. Let's go on a, let's, let's give ourselves 10 minutes, so we'll come back at eight, a little bit after 8:15. Or we'll be on recess until 10 minutes from now, 8:16 PM.
I really enjoyed that. So I'm looking up...
Sylvia and Matt, if we could, I think, starting from the top, maybe talk about the changes from the ordinance as it was coming to us, not with Councilman Richfield's changes, but, you know, the ordinance and based on council discussions.
So it has gone from eight to six pages. The definition of bedroom, that was specific several council meetings ago, so that is included now. It's in italic, it'll be in regular font. Definitions.
I think we changed the local emergency contact.
Yes, to be available within the hour, or have given enforcement authority to the Sunset Valley Police Department.
Can you highlight what was changed? So it stands out, or no?
We've already made that.
Oh.
Basically, it's this section right here where it's basically who can...
Highlight, just so it stands out.
Yeah, who can respond in an hour or give enforcement authorization.
From the, I believe this was a zoning change, a residential structure also includes a guest house. And the change that the zoning also made was that a travel trailer cannot be one of those structures that is rented out.
We took out...
In, I'm sorry.
Registration requirements? Registration requirements, we took out, we took out several sections, simplified it with adding trade names.
Unregistered.
Unregistered agents to number one, to the owners.
But isn't number three?
And then we took out some additional.
We added permission that the rental property is a registrant's property, or permission from the property owner, allowing the use as an STR. We kept the maximum number of occupants to three times the number of bedrooms.
Number three and number one.
Two different, so this is the property owner, the company name, and the registered agent, this is the actual emergency contact.
Got it.
Dimension room layout is taken out.
Yes, and so it's just a submission of a sketch floor plan and a sketch of the property. It doesn't have to be a survey, showing where people can park, and they don't encroach onto the street or other rights of way. We kept that they shall file their hotel occupancy tax questionnaire. Let me close that parentheses. The owner is required to schedule an inspection checklist, and we attached the checklist, removing the requirement for the brochure. Left all other requirements in place. Only the portion of the premises offered for rent. This area stayed the same. The brochure was, the brochure area and the safety features were reorganized to separate the safety feature, meaning the owner, registrant, needs to provide the fire extinguisher, and then the informational brochure provided by the city. Oh, we didn't accept these changes. The renewal fee is every two years. And everything else pretty much stayed the same. We removed all the extra about the building official having right of entry.
Inspection is specific to the areas that will be used.
And then cleaned up the board of adjustments.
Yes, we took out the redundant board of adjustment information as well.
Could it, could the inspection be done by a third party, wherever that says inspection, instead of saying admin or staff, say, third-party inspector, since we're talking about Comas being the inspector?
They, I mean, where's... It says city, the building official or designee, so in our contract with Comas, they are designated building inspector.
Okay. That was all the substantive changes. There were some numbering changes that happened as things were deleted. And, yep, that's the end of the document.
So, Staff, this is our...
Another one that was brought up is a bedroom that doesn't have any doors or any walls. How do you put a smoke detector or carbon monoxide on the outside of the bedroom when there is no door? So, how do we define that? Say, there's a curtain closing off a room for privacy, but there's no doors, no wall. But we say to put the smoke detector on the outside of the bedroom.
Where's the outside coming from? I see a smoke detector inside.
Must be installed in every bedroom.
Must be installed in every bedroom. I mean, a studio is the bedroom.
Okay.
So, covered?
Okay.
And our, and our building, you know, our building inspector, you know, they're certified, so they will be able to go in on-site and will trust, trust in our building official to determine, building inspector to determine, this is a safe, you know, bedroom. We're trusting in their expertise.
Outside, yeah. On the checklist, we're...
The inspection list, it specifies outside.
Outside the bedroom. I thought I saw it somewhere. Right there, underneath health and safety.
Or...
Are located outside of every bedroom. So usually inside the bedroom, and there's usually one outside in the hallway.
And how much is the...
I don't know.
Say, for code or something?
Yep.
If ever, if, and how much is...
Yes, because they were there specifically on those questions.
Yes, they've ever kind of spoke of the smoke detector. For, either on the residence...
Yes.
Well, let her reset further international residential code on the outside wrapper of this clause?
Yeah, it's all good.
So I wouldn't do the...
Yeah. Yeah, it already mentions that up at the, up above one.
It mentions, smoke alarms or it mentions?
International residential code is up there, right above number one, egress, bedroom or sleeping unit, as required by the international residential code.
Right.
Shall contain.
Smoke alarm, yes, smoke alarms are required in different areas of the house.
All right, so, Council, this is our best attempt at a compromise document. We can have further discussion if there are specific changes that we want to also continue to amend. The other thing that we want to deliberate, or potentially as part of any motion, would be any fee, as well as when this would go into effect. We cannot make it go into effect any sooner than when we would be publishing the ordinance, which would take some time, just to make sure we're publishing it, but we could set a point in the future if we wanted to delay the implementation while we prepare for registration and communication out to residents and owners. Councilman Richfield, do you have your embrace?
Yeah, I would love to, at the request of one of our residents, just specify in that inspection phase that it will be done by a third party, rather than a city official. So right now, it's like by the...
Official or...
Right, so I would just like to specify that that's a third party and not a city employee.
Sometimes I am the building official.
Understood, but we've said, we've said that it will be a third party that we've already contracted with. You've already agreed that that's your plan. So I'm just saying, can we please codify that?
It's codified in the other sections of the code.
It is not, that it will only be that person.
So we removed a bunch of redundant stuff here that was redundant in other sections of code.
Cool, can we look at 150, 121, please?
So 150, 121, you want to remove what?
I'd like to see it.
And, you know, what if one day we have an inspector on staff, and we have to go back and change the code? What, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I think it's the designee, like in our contract with Macomas, it's, you know, they're our party.
Sometimes it's...
And sometimes it's one of, you know, it could be one of us. Yeah, so.
So, 121.
So this does not specify anything about who's going to do it, right? There's literally no language there about who's going to perform the inspection. There's another inspection section.
I think that's under 126A.
Yeah, 126A. To permit the city's building official or their designee. So I would just like to, and I'm literally just echoing a resident thing, but I think it'd be helpful, since we've already decided that it's going to be, so instead of the city's building official or their designee, to say that a designee, or like a third-party designee, or a non-city person or something.
What do we pay for inspections?
Depends, depends on what type of inspection it is. Macomas has one fee, and ATS has another fee.
So, something like this, what would you imagine that we pay?
Seven, sixty-five, seventy-five dollars.
Okay, so if they had to go back, so say they're missing a smoke detector, and if they had to go back, we'd have to pay them another sixty-five dollars? So maybe our, our fee is too small, with, if that's required.
That, or I can go on-site and not charge.
Yeah.
How about if this says, to allow the city's building inspector... Does that capture that? If that's going to be an outsourced position? I don't know.
I think that doesn't make sense. Most of the clients we are non-accomplished, have... That we just, that's not what we're doing. But there are points in time where something can't get done very quickly, and the amount of time a contractor wants something done quickly. So...
Okay, are we ready to vote on this?
Well, any further questions? Okay, we need a motion if we're going to be voting on something, so I'd recommend that whoever's the motion maker also include when this goes into effect. We will be bringing back any approved rates or fee at a future council meeting, but you can include that as part of the motion as well, to say with a fee of X, right?
You can use it for granted.
Right. So I'd recommend that the motion maker include fee for registration and effective date as the part of the motion.
Okay, so I move that we accept this document as the ordinance for the short-term rental registration, effective beginning fourth quarter of the calendar year, October 1st, with a permit fee of two fifty. Registration fee.
There's, there's a motion to adopt the short-term rental regulation, registration, with an effective date of October 1st, with a registration fee of two hundred fifty dollars. Is there a second for that motion?
Go.
Second?
Councilman Rosegarden, second. That opens it up for discussion. So we can discuss, continue to discuss this document, we can discuss the effective date, we can discuss the registration fee proposed. Senator Richfield?
So, Barbara, you mentioned that there's three cases in the Texas Supreme Court right now that are expected to come down, that will kind of dramatically change our legal landscape. When do we expect that those will be returned?
I believe, two of them are actually at the Supreme, one is in the appellate level. But I believe that within the next three to six months, we should have decisions on all of those.
Okay, so three to six months from now, we expect that the legal framework on which we're trying to build something will look different and will be much more clear.
It, it...
May look different, will be more clear.
May look different, yeah, I, I don't, I, you know, I mean, there's, there's differing case, there's differing underlying challenges. And so, I mean, one, some of them are attacking just the basic, I mean, something that you're not even doing, which is actual, kind of like, you can't have them here, you can only have them over here. So some of that is what's, you know, is some of the challenges. But there's other things that are just built into some of that, that will potentially, you know, firm up or clarify certain aspects of what Zatari has left kind of hanging.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan Johnson?
Rough guess, how many total cases have there been on STRs?
Ooh, shoot. In, in what timeframe?
Okay, so, it's probably, yeah, so, it's not like these three are going to change everything under the sun.
No, I mean, I think one of, some of, Zatari helped immensely clarify a landscaping, but there's still some lingering things out there. There's still, you know, are you able to limit the areas of your town that are allowing them? Are you able to limit them to multifamily? Are you able to limit them to a variety? I mean, there's, there's all sorts of just nuances that, I mean, people think of ways, you know, you all are creative people.
Yeah, and...
And you think of all sorts of, of ways, and then we have to get creative over here to try and figure out, is that going to be a helpful, hurtful, whatever? You know, no, I'm just, it, there's just all sorts of changes in the landscape that occur when you are trying to do anything, and especially now that it has been declared more of a property right, that was a pretty big hurdle. So, that's what I'm saying. There, there are at least fifty cases out there that are fairly large.
Any further questions or discussion on this item before we move to votes? All right, all those in paper approving the short-term rental document as amended, and the inspection list, with a registration fee of two hundred fifty dollars, with an effective date of October 1st, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. Hopefully by October 1st, we'll have any additional clarifications that we need to potentially amend the ordinance as well, that legal can provide us guidance on if we need to make changes. And that'll also be an opportunity for council to continue to get resident feedback before this goes into effect. All right, council, that was a lot of work, appreciate that. And I, I, in the spirit of compromise, I hope everybody is, is good. With that, we're going to move to agenda number, as a reminder, we're not, we are tabling agenda number 11 at the request of the applicant who wished to, to speak to their variance request at the next council meeting, which will be July 19th. We're going to be moving on to the remaining two agenda items, which is agenda number 12 and 13. These are presentation items for discussion only, no action. And we're on agenda number 12, discussion in staff direction on the comprehensive plan. And so this will begin with a staff presentation, and then open it up for council questions.
So, this really is a, a discussion of where staff believes we need to be in terms of the comprehensive plan, and in terms of the schedule, moving the plan forward, taking into account all of the consideration of committee input, maybe some joint committee meetings, and then zoning, having their hand at it, having the public document out, the draft document out for public consumption, and then putting this in front of the council at some point in May of 2023. I think that, even as you look at some of those timelines, that even, that may be a little bit aggressive, but one of the first milestones is really approving the final mission and vision statements as a council. I would like us to do that at some point very soon. It does lead the discussion about the comprehensive plan. And right now, we have Canales moving forward with brand pillars that speak to our mission and vision, but there isn't anything that has been formally adopted by you guys from your last group meeting, what do you call it, your, yes, your retreat.
Do we have a copy of that?
Of your mission and vision?
Yes.
No, it was all the work that we did here. It's still all in draft form.
So, Council, this is an update for the retreat, because there's been a number of delays in terms of being able to reschedule that. But I am working on a date to have a follow-up to that session, so we can finalize these documents, and the July timeframe seems to be...
So it's just the mission and vision statement, and I can't really quite remember the difference between the vision, the mission and the vision statement.
We did make some significant changes in that conference room about the rural nature and...
Yep, I remember that.
Do you remember that discussion? Bringing that forward for final adoption, because it does sort of guide the conversation in terms of where you want the rest of it to go. So that's still in draft form, we haven't circled back to adopt any of the recommended changes that y'all made.
Okay.
But this timeline is reasonable with what I've been coordinating with, with Tom and with Karen, so. Senator Richfield?
So I, I wish I had it in front of me, but I don't. Can we see the previous timeline that we approved? Because like, we all sat up here and agreed with staff that there would be a different timeline. So I'd just love to compare those if we could.
So was this the four public hearings we scheduled?
Supposed to be done by this time.
Right, it was, that was our, kind of our first aggressive...
Yeah, so like, we're targeting like in August or... So this is asking to push that back a year?
Yes.
What changed?
The fact that folks want input, the folks that it shouldn't be led by one committee, and then another committee wanting to ax it completely, which is what happened, planning and environmental, you guys did a lot of work, it got to zoning commission, zoning commission wanted to redline it completely. And so there was a lot of discussion about, well, there was a lot of committees who still haven't had input. And so this is putting that calendar in front of those committees, and then also putting it for bigger public consumption.
So, but that, we were giving them five months to do it, and they're asking for fifteen. And like, I don't understand how they're going to get anything done in fifteen that they couldn't get done in five.
I'll let you ask the zoning chair.
We just discharged your title. How long has that been?
Senator Johnson?
Four pages.
I...
This is eighteen.
Yeah, it's an eighteen-page document. I have, the committees that I'm a liaison for, they have their own, you know, chairs and vice-chairs and everything, but I've basically said, like, as a committee, please take a month. As residents, take it, come to all the things. So, like, that's one month. I think if zoning wants to, I don't want to say drag it out, wants to do their due diligence, they need to increase the frequency of their meetings. Like, we have meetings twice a month. Do we have any power to kind of like, request that they do that? I, I know, I know that other committees will have more than once a month meetings when time is, and this is only once a decade, this process will happen once a decade. So once a decade, we need the people and the committees that want to have extra, you know, redlining ability to get together more often.
So, and zoning has agreed to meet more often, they've agreed to meet on whatever calendar we need to meet to get it, but the problem is, if zoning committee starts to redline something that is running concurrent with where other committees are meeting, where does that document culminate, and how does it come to council? That's, that's the whole point, is letting the committees have input, and zoning, who's going to be tasked with essentially enforcing this as it gets written into the code, you know, they're, they're sort of the proofers of the final whatever comp plan document before it ends up in your hands. And so that was some of the discussion that we had at the dais last time, that there's committees that haven't had input, and where is that input? So, the calendar gives the committees a few months, and it, it only gives zoning and legal, November, December, January, it gives them three months after everybody else is done, and that's during the holidays. So it doesn't give zoning a whole lot of time, they're gonna have to meet frequently to get it done. What it does is it pushes it back to committees, and then some joint sessions, because a lot of the discussion is a committee of push and pull, right? One committee has a certain need, desire, want to get written in, and another committee thinks that is completely onerous on the part of whomever. So somewhere that meet in the middle document is what most of that timeline is.
In my mind, it feels like something that can, we can do all these things at the same time. Am I, does that seem like a silly idea? Like, we, like, it's gonna eventually come here, and, I don't know, we'll be paying attention to all these other, all these other committees and their ideas, and the public hearings. Are we doing just public hearings, or are we doing...
Public comment hearings in that, too. There's joint committee meetings, there's individual committee meetings, and then zoning and legal get it after the joint meetings and the council mission and vision. So it seems like it's a long time out, but if you take a look at what's happening during those time periods, it, it truly isn't.
Just as a refresher, so we had originally scheduled for, and this is, you know, state, state requirements when adopting or updating your comprehensive plan. So on May 17th, we had a, we did have a public hearing, we had a, we had a town hall, not super well-attended on April 25th. We had a public hearing on May 17th, we had three residents speak, we had a staff presentation, three residents speak, and then this is the minute, staff was directed to cancel the two public hearings, this is after y'all discussed, staff was directed to cancel the two public hearings scheduled for June, to be rescheduled later in the summer after the zoning commission. Committees and the residents have provided additional input on the comprehensive plan. That was like the last step, excuse me, that was the last council direction to staff, so...
Say that last part again, just that we wanted to come back in...
Yeah, I, I know there was discussion at that, I remember you specifically, Mayor, said, you know, you, you would like to see possibly adoption by, I think, you know, October, November. There wasn't really a, we didn't really discuss a calendar at that, at that meeting, but staff was directed, we were directed to go ahead and cancel the rest of the public hearing scheduled, and then basically, you know, present it to, to various committees, for the committees to examine relevant sections of the plan that correspond to, to those committees. And several of you, you know, wanted us to really try to engage the community and have, you know, more meetings, more opportunities for resident input.
Senator Reitz?
So I'm not sure I understand the concern about getting this done quickly, and I'll tell you my experience. We did the wildfire protection plan, and we had all the committees review it, and I listened in on some of the committees, and basically, this plan is about, what, thirty per cent?
Say that last part again, just that we wanted to come back in
Yeah, I, I know there was discussion at that. I remember you specifically, Mayor, said, you know, you, you would like to see possibly adoption by, I think, you know, October, November. There wasn't really a, we didn't really discuss a calendar at that, at that meeting, but staff was directed, we were directed to go ahead and cancel the rest of the public hearing scheduled and then basically, you know, present it to, to various committees, for the committees to examine relevant sections of the plan that correspond to, to those committees. And several of you, you know, wanted us to really try to engage the community and have, you know, more meetings, more opportunities for resident input.
Counselor Reitz?
So I'm not sure I understand the concern about getting this done quickly. And I'll tell you my experience. We did the wildfire protection plan and we had all the committees review it. And I listened in on some of the committees and basically this plan is about, what, 30 pages or so, 20 pages? And so it's like, read this and comment on it. And so it would come to the meeting and no one had read it, you know, but they would comment a little bit and all of a sudden it's passed. And it was a, it's, I would like this to be a process where everybody really gives it some thoughtful consideration. And the reason why that's so important is that when you get people involved, they have buy-in, they understand it, they have buy-in. And so when we have things like variances come up, we all know what we're talking about and everybody's, you know, everybody's saying, we all agree this, we talked through all these issues before. And so this would be helpful to get more of that community buy-in. So I don't think there's a, I don't, I'm not sure why there's a rush to get it done. And, and then I have one little tiny comment and that is, I was, you know, looking, you know, here I've been kind of embroiled in this lighting variance, you know? And so I'm looking at this the other day, looking at my agendas, and if you go to the very last page, it has lighting, there's a little section on lighting. And it says halfway in between, like toward the middle, it says lighting should be energy efficient below 3,000 Kelvin. There's that tiny word, below, it's not at or below, it is below. Our ordinance to say, you know, 3,000. And so it's like, oh my gosh, do I have to read this entire document word by word like an attorney to catch these little things? And, you know, and it's very, it's concerning to me that there, are there little gotchas in there? I don't know. And do I not understand something? I want to make sure I understand every section now. And so I want to take the time to make sure I understand it, make sure everybody on council understands everything, everybody in our committees understand it, every resident who wants to participate understands it. So I have no problem at all taking the time to do that.
So part of the, the other kind of complication in terms of like where we're weighing scheduling is that, you know, when we were originally talking about rezoning or, you know, some of the properties we had, we had made reference to finishing the comprehensive plan and bringing those zonings back, right, for proposed zoning changes to like 31 Lone Oak and to the property we just purchased on Brody and one of the property that was, you know, that was, there are three properties that we identified. And we said, we, yeah, we said, part of this was being, you know, I believe we keyed it off of, you know, the timeline of having the comprehensive plan brought back. And so we can obviously override that if we want to, but we're intending to try to get to a point where we could have our future land use, you know, identified and we could rezone those. I think if we're going to be extending the timeline for the comprehensive plan review, we may want to revisit the prioritization of getting those properties rezoned, right, which may, you know, not necessarily align with some of the, the, the changes that we're talking about long-term. The other, I think the other factor that we're considering in terms of, we talked about bringing in a consultant, we had an RFP go out, I think, for, for the land development code, which wouldn't really happen until we have our comprehensive plan done. So land development code revisions would be a follow-on process, right? And, and, you know, one of the things that we've identified over and over again is that we have difficulty with our current code because of the, you know, the, you know, the kind of the way it's written. And we did have an RFP go out to, you know, hire a firm to bring on, you know, to help us with land development code revisions. That's just consideration, right? You know, if we're, you know, we're considering lengthening this process, we're also talking about pushing those, those out, right, as a consequence or as a component of this. I know that we talked about the respondee for the land development code, RFP could also potentially help us with the comprehensive plan as well. They have some experience, you know, where they could be potential leverage there. But again, I think we want to keep on track for these kind of major changes that we're talking about and as a factor of like how long we take with this process. If we want to take time, that's fine, we just want to make sure that we're thinking in terms of these other waterfalls, you know, that
I, I get you. And I, at least there's some reasoning behind that versus let's just get it done, you know, and I get that, so I appreciate that. A couple of things that I think that could make, a couple of comments that could make this a little bit better or faster is that, one, there's like a table of contents in the beginning, so everybody knows all the different sections. And, and then it's like every month, the committees meet once a month and they say, we're going to review one-third of this and then the next month, one-third, next. So we know that they've actually read, it's not overwhelming. If you give someone an 18-page document and say, here it is, well, you're not going to get very good comments. So if you break it down and everybody has the same schedule, all committees have the same schedule, that means by, if we start, let's say in July, or even probably August, August, September, October, we should have all the comments, then it goes through zoning and then it comes to us. And at the meantime, we should be fed all these types of, we should be receiving all this information too. Okay, okay, but if you do the, if you would break it down and every committee has the same task, you know, let's, let's do one-third of the document to, you know, et cetera.
So I threw in a, I threw in a couple of joint committee meetings because as I listen to the committees There's a good idea. There's a lot of push and pull among the committees within the document itself, just within CED, PNA, there's a lot of push and pull. And so that's why the mission and vision is so important because that's supposed to drive it, right? And then secondly, all of the committees in a room having that discussion about what the expectation is of this document, that, you know, perhaps they aren't gotchas, but that's what's already written in the code, or we need to revisit that in the code, those kinds of things. Because there's a lot of, you know, miscommunication surrounding the document itself. And what zoning took issue with is exactly that, okay, wow, this goes contrary to what we already have in the code, are we going to have to mark that up? And this doesn't make legal sense compared to the code. So zoning was going to take that super deep legal dive as well as the legal review. What I didn't want zoning to do is take a dive and the committees are working on their stuff and narrow do those things ever match and make it to you guys as a document, so.
Okay, so if we look at that, so if we, if we started July, August, September, one-third of the comprehensive plan reviewed by each committee, then we had the joint meeting in, in October, that still works, okay? And then zoning, and somewhere in there, somebody is going to have to pull it all together. Who does that? Is that you guys will pull it all together with all the comments and then and then public comment period? And, and I would also be publishing these in the newsletter, each, like one-third of it, you know? And so that goes out to all of our residents. And they can access it through the storyboard to make comments on just, you know, particular sections so we can really concentrate on, you know, just break it down just a little more manageable.
So I gave the council, I gave zoning and legal whatever for January to, we can shake that, I gave the draft documents to council in January of 2023. And then open up public comments and we can perhaps shake it to March of 2023 as opposed to May of 2023.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with, let's get it, once we, once zoning's done, get it as quickly to the council and begin that process. Even if it's a couple of months, that's helpful, you know, from the timeline. Counselor Luthfield?
Yeah, and just to kind of reiterate where I am, so we, so we made the four-month plan, we all sat down and agreed to it. We came back and then after that, we got the zoning thing that then got gated on that, right? So I feel like there's my sense of urgency to get this done. But then we came back and we decided, okay, instead of four months, we're going to take six months, right? And so that's the decision that we made together as a group, that we were going to do it in six months instead of four. And so then when I see a plan that's 15 after that, six months, that's kind of surprising. And I'm trying to just find out where the estimate missed, if anything. If this is a much better plan and it may wind up being like a much better document and that's great, but like we totally missed earlier. And then if we can un-gate those kind of zoning changes that I think are important to do, then I'm really comfortable moving forward with a, the plan that was just, that we can kind of get to.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, it was, it's almost like a price anchoring thing where it's like, the, the base model is $4,000, but the premium is $4 million. It's like, how did we, where did we go wrong there? So it, it just seems like, I wonder if the original estimate was, well, this one's just maybe better thought out and we were just kind of flying by the seat of our pants before, but it is only 18 pages. And for, I am super distracted and I read that, that sucker in like an hour.
And I would recommend that the council members that sponsored the rezoning legislation, if it's important for you to get it done in a timeframe that's, you know, sooner than this, you know, bringing something back to council as far as how that would, our resolution, you know, to kind of wait, you know, would be affected by this to, to say, what do you want to get done? Is there certain properties you want to do that are key, right, you know, that we want to look at?
Maybe after the plan, which should be coming in a month or two, right?
In August is when the Parks and Space Plan should be done, yeah. That might be a better milestone for us when we're talking about those
I think so too.
Right. Counsel, any further questions or direction for staff? What we're talking about is amending the schedule, proposed schedule to final action in March of 2023?
So, so we're talking among staff. What about a, two joint committee meetings to hash the document out in two meetings on a Saturday in July and a Saturday in August?
Okay, instead of like going to individual committees?
Instead of going to individual committees?
And then those will count as, they'll be public meetings, so they'll count as public hearings. And then if there's committee members that aren't vested, you know, or, you know, invested in, you know, they, they don't want to take up their normal committee agenda doing this, but they're, you know, so we're, we're, we're focusing the meeting on, this is a review of the comp plan so that it's not taking up the other committee business, you know, and it's invitation, it's a public meeting, it's an invitation to, you know, all the committee members, you know, and then whoever, you know, whoever comes and participates in that process.
This would put it, that would put it in your hands in about the November, December timeframe?
So I kind of like the more intimate setting of a committee meeting just because if you say something contrary, like I might have said something very contrary to when I said, you know, below 3,000 versus at or below. And I want, people might not want to speak up in a large room if it's, seems contrary to what other people are thinking. So I kind of like the intimate, but I do like the joint committees, but, but I do like some intimate committee talk.
What if we gave them a space to do anonymous comments or a space to, a safe space to be able to make those comments? Because they don't, they don't necessarily have to
Verbalize it upfront.
It could be incorporated into the document and that's, that's through staff. I mean, there are safe spaces in, in places to do that. I just, my feeling is in talking to all the committees, there are contrary ideas among the committees. And I know there's a good meet in the middle place. And I just don't feel like we can meet in the middle without having those joint sessions.
I, I agree, you have to have them. But it might, maybe it's a combination, maybe you have something upfront with the, with each committee and then, then they're prepared so they don't coming to the meeting unprepared. So.
Committees in July that haven't seen this document, here, you know, here's the document.
Yeah, because, you know, CED hasn't really seen it, yeah.
Right, so July, every committee, you know, have a place on their agenda because their budget should be theoretically done. So in July, every committee, this, you know, amongst themselves, here's the comp plan, you know, think about your comments and then we schedule the joint sessions in
In August.
August, September.
Real, real quick, I realize the time got away from me.
Oh, yeah.
Can we get a motion to extend the meeting, please? Past nine o'clock. Counselor Reitz?
Yes, I moved, we extend our meeting past nine o'clock.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. So we, with that schedule where we had a July presentation of the comprehensive plan, draft documents to committees and then have joint meetings in August, September, that takes it to zoning, October, November, we potentially get it back as soon as December or January, right? So it brings it forward a little bit further, okay.
Tim? Yep. When I was looking this, this schedule, I, I think then, in the way that I am, I am looking is that that committee from planning, they spend a lot of time. So they had a, a lot of discussions and hours working with that plan. We have another committees, but why we don't have that open in the website? And in, if in other committees, they have opinions, they need to bring that. So in that way, maybe you will have not so many points, 10, 12 points, so you have to bring them. And in that way, this is why we have at this moment that open glove, that was the idea to have open glove. Yeah, yeah, but we have, we have to go to the houses, we have to push the people. If we need to bring cards, we need to bring cards to each house and, and request that and try to say, we cannot go to the land development code until we will have the comprehensive plan, so we need your help. Now, you have the basis and these bases, there were so many months of some group of people that they were working with that. So we will see what will be the feedback because this is not the same to the school. If, if again, we go to a formal, a formal meeting, everybody has different ideas. When you say committees, that will be very difficult to came to some consensus. However, if you let them free, they have, they can bring you something and later we need to put together. Now, more or less, planning, they have the idea. Now, they say, well, it's totally different to this other committee, so what, what do you have? Bring something. And they have to bring that. And after that, zoning, well, zoning is only one time per month, it's very difficult. So if we need zoning, what is the feedback from zoning? So when you put all together, this is when we will start working as a council and everybody will be working in more or less one line. I was reading the 18 pages, I read that and they weren't bad. So obviously, I, I don't cover all the aspects from the city, so this is why other committees, they need to go there. But when you send this sometimes to one consultant, that is not bad, they have experience, but they don't have the experience than these people that was working with the project. And this is why sometimes they believe that is part of their baby, it's their baby at this moment, it's a new, new comprehensive plan. So this is why we need to invite other people. I don't want to do analogy, analogies, but sometimes when you open one business, you open the business. So if you are not doing marketing, if you don't show a lot of things, the business is not business, the people, they don't show up. So we have a lot of these things, we need to invite the people, we need to send and send papers and after that, we will have something much better. Looking this in the way, the, the calendar as it was, the action was on May, May 2023. Now they say, no, July, August and September, the committees, they can be working. On October, they will join and on January they will join, and on January, they will pass to zoning. I don't see, this is the calendar. This is, at this moment, you try to build another calendar. Well, I would like to give it to zoning, more, more feedback. I need from them more. At this moment, it's critical for us to start working with these kind of things. Next year, again, with variance, and with other kind of things. So we don't have sometimes, the idea how, how we want to move. And if we are looking in that, I think that is important. It's important, members of the city council, because the land development code will be another time. So, with this is only one part, but later we'll go the second part. And if we, if we will go in the same way, this will be 2025. So, please, I think that we need to start thinking, not only to put that, to discuss and invite the people. When I say marketing, we need to do marketing with the public. This is mainly than I tried to say.
And so in addition to having the committees be part of this process, and effort to outreach directly to the residents through, you know, notifications that this, this review's happening, we want your input, inviting them to participate in this process before we finalize it, right? So this would be trying to get.
And we, we have our community coordinator beginning a month from today, and we're very excited to have her on board, and she has some, she's coming with skills in community engagement and outreach. So we'll put her, put her to work as soon as, as soon as she starts.
So, this is, but inside, inside, Mayor, when I say, some committees, they are very important, are very critical. Zoning is one of them. And sometimes, with all my respect to them, they are the, the heart. And sometimes, if the heart is not moving, we don't move. So sometimes we need to push in a few words. That's it.
Counsel, before opening up to comments from the public, any further questions, discussion on this? All right. Members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please go ahead.
Lisa Versace, Pillow Road. Yes, thank you all. So we did put a lot of time, a lot of time in this project, and I appreciate you recognizing our committee's work. I really want to recognize Carolyn Meredith also, who's really helped us a lot throughout this whole process. Now, remember, she's been with the city for 20 years. This comprehensive plan is not much different. It's incrementally different than comprehensive plans we've had in previous years. I want to remind everyone that we're not making zoning recommendations. We're not making any sort of land development code recommendations per se in this document. This is in the spirit of what has been done historically in Sunset Valley for a very long time. And I think that if we want to just deconstruct this whole process, and have all the different committees weigh in, that's, that's great. But I just want to remind everyone, it's not that different than the previous. And also, I was under the impression that we had pressure from the state to update our, which we usually called master plan, to comprehensive plan, which was because we're required to have a comprehensive plan from the state. So I guess that means that our current comprehensive plan will continue to be our comprehensive plan until everybody decides what the changes are. Obviously, that was a typo on the 3,000 Kelvin. It's a small thing, and we didn't mean for it to be not in compliance with the current land development code, nor dictate that it be, you know, that's a small typo. I remember when we added the 3,000 Kelvin, and it was like a last minute thing, and we were like, well, we need to be more specific. So, I think, everybody needs to realize that, I don't know, like, maybe they should be giving their paragraph, like, if we forgot to include something about supporting the business in Sunset Valley, like, maybe that's the pink elephant in the room. Oh, economic development, really want some pro-business stuff in there. Great, propose a paragraph. Put it together in your committee, and let's work together and like, make it better, and like, make sure that businesses know that we're also business friendly, as well as all the things that we care about in previous comprehensive plans and previous land development code. We want to make new business friendly language in there. Okay, great, well, propose something. Don't just critique and criticize. Obviously, this has been open to the public for a long time, and we have barely any comments. Could it be because the public kind of likes it? I mean, they don't really take that much issue with it? I mean, I think that some of the results from our survey might indicate that, yeah, people like status quo here. They like Sunset Valley. We don't need to change it that much. We don't need that much improvement and throw away history, you know? I mean, I'm just saying, like, this wasn't created in a vacuum. This is the work of many, many years and evolutions of the same basic premise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. What Lisa said, but, to me, it was always the intention, well, I think it's a difficult thing, because it's not sexy. It's tedious, you know? And it requires a significant, the comprehensive plan requires a significant amount of base knowledge and inclination. Lumens, Kelvins, I mean, really, how interesting and sexy is that? Not so much, you know? And you have to go, want to go research what that is. So, so not only, you know, if your Kindle isn't highlighting it, and you're not going to just instantly be able to get an answer to that, you're going to skim it, you know? That's what's going to happen. And so that, that's kind of one of the problems with documents like this, and creating interest. And so, we've had it up a long time, and there's very few statements, as Lisa said. And when we had the first one, I would say there's, I can think of some significant opposition to this plan, and, and I've heard it stated. And, and I heard it at zoning from the city administrator, which was a little appalling to me. Feel free to listen. And so, it's, it is a, but it is, as Lisa said, a lot of the status quo. And there are people who don't like the status quo. And when I saw the first meeting, I saw people who would be later voting on this plan and their spouses as the majority of the comments at the first time. So, you know, again, those are the ones that diverged. And so it's just, some people don't like it, but they'll be voting on it anyway, you know? So I don't know why they're very worried about it, you know? And so, it, I don't know that we're going to get a lot of comment on it. I agree, we should try. And I think we should do exactly, as Lisa said, and what we intended, is that there are parts that are very sexy to certain committees, and they should get to dig it and write on it, you know? Shop, we wanted to shop certain areas, and P and E didn't have the expertise. Anything that's public works really ought to be pulled out and said, hey, this part, public works, talk about it. This part, CED, talk about it, you know? Because that part, you can shop and get commentary, and you're getting commentary from the people who know most about it. And so, I think it probably should have gone to zoning in the first place instead of P and E. P and E didn't really want it. But I think certain people decided it was better to go to P and E. I have my opinions about why that might have been. But I love zoning. I think it's great for them to go over it. I think they know a lot about it. So I'm thrilled to have them go over it. So, but I think, piece by piece, it really ought to go, and if we don't get the rest of them, when am I into it? Decide that's reasonable. People, you can't force feed people. You just can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who should speak? Go ahead, sir.
All right, real, real quick on a couple of things. I suggested tonight, before they tabled number 11, that you look at Wiki light pollution, because the wavelength, the color, the amount of UV, all interacts with biology now, we know, in amazing numbers of ways. How insects, we have fireflies here in Sunset Valley, they're very disruptive. So there's all kinds of things to check. That's number one. Number two, I wanted to say that I would volunteer to help do some of the organization stuff for this restoration business. For example, Native American seed, I've bought seed from them before. I know they do restorations. I did call them, got a rough quote of what it would be per acre. I would be glad to talk with the Audubon Society, who's stewarding the Ford Commons 40-acre restoration that they did, to talk to them about their problems, and if we could get their volunteers to come out and help us in some way, I'd be glad to try to help raise some of the funds for it. I do know at this point that the current park plan for Cougar Creek is running about $5 million, for less than $1 million, I believe. We could take care of completely the uplands, do that entirely. We could do everything at 37 Lone Oak, completely restore that, and even do the entire Cougar Creek area. And the last point is this, in Cougar Creek, when we walked it the other day, very undulating, and what that does in a prairie, you get switchgrass in the lower places, and other species in the other places. So that's actually a quite diverse place. And, watch my time, but I think originally, the councils had decided that Cougar Creek would not be touched by the development at all, because they traded off that land for allowing the new shopping center, PetSmart. So I'm not sure why any development at all is being discussed about that land. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from residents or members of the public? Councilor Reeves?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that I know that planning and environmental put a lot of work into this, and I know that you put your heart and soul in it, and I know that. And, but what you had is, you had the opportunity to discuss things among yourselves, and you probably argued back and forth, oh, I like, you know, this and that. That's what we're doing here. We need that opportunity to do that, to question things. And, you know, I hope y'all don't, you know, don't take it overly personal. If, if I bring out something that I think, in my opinion, is, is, doesn't reflect what the future should be. So, I just think that we have to be, we have to look at this, and I don't want to slight anybody's work at all, but there has to be a process where everybody gets their ideas and thoughts into it, so.
To counsel, this item is not an action item, but it is an opportunity to provide direction to staff. What I've heard is that we'd like to try to bring in this timeline and consider meeting some of the goals that have been outlined for both the, bringing it to committees, but also having the joint sessions, bring it to zoning, and then bringing it as soon as possible to council, once zoning has completed their work, and we've got their input. In addition, there's expressed a desire to have the city reach out to residents to make them aware that this is a chance for them to review and provide input, and that's possibly leveraged by the community coordinator, as one of the positions that they can bring. So those are where we're at in terms of direction. Any further direction that we want to take? Councilor Rose, you're on?
Just want you to be aware, budget and finance meets every week, so we're quite busy already.
Understood.
Thank you.
Councilor Lethal?
So what was that timeline that Matt had mentioned around, like, maybe November, December? Could we kind of talk through that again?
Having my notes, so July, each committee will have a place on their agenda to kind of have an introductory discussion, if they haven't already looked at it, you know, here's where the document is, you know, be thinking about it. Then we, we're going to plan joint, you know, committee meetings, inviting whoever from the committees or the public wants to attend in August and September. And then, a zoning review and legal review timeframe, October, November, you know, multiple meetings. And then, council and more public meetings, December, January. So those, those timeframes.
And as part of the July-August timeframe, we'd be doing community outreach as well, trying to target, bringing input that are members of the community that are not normally part of the committee process. All right. Any further discussion on this agenda item? All right, appreciate everybody's input into this. Our last agenda item for the night is update on the negotiations with City of Austin related to the water contract. And if staff could begin with just an overview of where we're at, for council to present any questions or any further direction that we want to bring back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are at our last agenda item. So, this is the, I'm going to give you a brief update on the negotiations we're doing right now with the City of Austin regarding our wholesale water contract. So the city has a water contract that was done in 2007. And as part of that contract, there were certain things that the City of Sunset Valley was required to do, and it was within a 15-year time period, which would put us at 2022, where we're at right now. Obviously, we are not going to be able to meet that deadline and get everything done that the City of Austin had originally had in that contract. At the same time, the City of Austin is also wanting all its wholesale customers to be on kind of a template water, wholesale water contract. So it kind of worked really well in that instance, that they're wanting to change something, we're not going to be able to meet that deadline. And so we've been negotiating and talking about this, the new water contract. What will come out of this will be two separate basic agreements. One will be the wholesale water contract. The other will be a customer, a customer transfer agreement. And this makes great sense, because the idea of having your water service and your wholesale water contract tied in with being able to do these construction processes is not really a great idea. So we will have two separate ones. And so what it comes down to is that there are certain places within the City of Sunset Valley that the City of Austin is servicing. And so, there is a thing called a CCN. It's a certificate of convenience and necessity, basically. And this is a thing that says, this is where you are going to serve these customers' water. You're the sole water provider. So, certain areas, like Austin and AISD properties, are obviously within our CCN, but are being serviced by the City of Austin at this time. Austin wants all of those places that are within our CCN to move to us as customer services. As such, we need to do certain kind of infrastructure projects over the next few years to make that happen. So we can start with AISD. And so we've come up with a plan to basically, the best option we came up with is to purchase the existing infrastructure that Austin already has in the road. Because once we take over, they don't need, they don't need that infrastructure anymore. So we will purchase their existing infrastructure, cap their line, connect it to our line, and that would bring AISD on as a customer of the City of Austin. I mean, customer of the City of Sunset Valley, sorry. And then, kind of moving up to Sterns Lane. Sterns Lane is an interesting one. So currently, what we have in Sterns Lane is that the city has basically two, what we refer to as mini master meters. These master meters serve two houses each on Sterns Lane. There's four total houses that we're serving on Sterns Lane at this point in time. There are more houses on Sterns Lane. Some of them have, some of them have wells, and then there's houses in the ETJ. Some of them have wells. Some of them are probably connected to the City of Austin line. So, when we approach the City of Austin regarding a master meter and trying to get Town Bridge on, Austin does not want to do any master meters that are only serving one or two customers. They want to serve large areas or that. If you go back to our 2007 agreement, at that time, there was always in that agreement that we would put in a meter, and we would serve all of, basically, the western side of Sterns Lane. So, Austin does not want to give us a meter for Town Bridge. So we talked to Town Bridge, we worked with Town Bridge, and came up with a plan to actually hook into the line that the city already possesses on 290, come around 290, and then to come down Sterns Lane. This will provide water to not just Town Bridge, but also we'll get the water to the lift station that we need for the cleanout. And there is a residential location that will be a developed pretty, I would say, in the near future, that needs to have water as well. And so, it also sets us up And so it, it also sets us up for the future because, remember, I told you we have two master meters right now on that, on Sterns Lane that we're using. When we're working at a trigger point, basically, of when those customers need to be transferred to a, a line, basically. And we're trying to find a, a date sometime in the future that maybe it's changes in use of the properties are being redeveloped in some way, or maybe there Austin's going through and doing a major reconstruction in the road, something of that nature, where then we will trigger that we need to start considering moving toward getting that line put in. On Sterns Lane, there is a question area. So there is a question of the properties in the ETJ. Currently, some of those are served by the City of Austin. Some are served by wells, and it just depends. The ETJ is a long ways down Sterns Lane. We also run into a lot of trees and different things like that. So a question that council may consider, and not asking you guys for definitely an answer full on tonight, is whether we talk to Austin and see about the possibility of changing our CCN on the northern part of the ETJ and releasing that section of the ETJ to Austin as they are the sole water providers, which in some way, in some of those residents, they are already the water provider. Or does the City of Sunset Valley want to build the line all the way down Sterns Lane at some point in the future? So that is a question that council will have to consider. Going back to Town Bridge. Town Bridge is going to be doing the initial kind of link into the 290 line. And in order to, and what we'll do is, when we will see this at council probably next month, is a participation agreement. And this agreement is going to be basically, Town Bridge builds the line over to the lift station, and we participate in the cost of that. In some ways, you'll get a lot of cost savings with that because private industry can do things in a different way than cities do, and there's going to be a cost participation agreement. So I think it will be very beneficial to the city, and it'll set us up for the future. Also, we'll get a fire hydrant on Sterns that we don't currently have any fire hydrants on that side of the road. And especially water to the lift station, which we currently don't have either. And so there's that portion at Sterns. Moving over to Countrywide Lane. This is a topic that was discussed pretty much at length in the Public Works Committee. Countrywide Lane is also in the city's ETJ. We would be, there's a private master meter that was done over when the barn was constructed. We would be purchasing that and turning it into a public water line at that point and bringing a water line down Countrywide Lane. What really was the sticking point for the Public Works Committee is that there is not adequate fire protection on Countrywide Lane. It is a two-inch line that is close to a residential line in some cases for like, long distances. And so we would be putting in a line and the fire hydrants necessary on Countrywide Lane to make that happen. You'll see this kind of, it's actually going to probably be a big project because we may actually do, Public Works Committee actually recommended to move forward with the wastewater line as well as the water line, and to do the whole project at one time and just do everything on Countrywide. The only other place we have is Brody. And so we, in Austin, once again, no more master meters. So anything on the east side of Brody, not the Countrywide side of Brody, on the east side of Brody, needs to come to Oakdale. So we are working on 6405 needs water service. We're trying to work through different options with 6405. Ideally, it comes down in easement through some residential properties, and that is the best, the most economic way for 6405 to build that line. However, another option would be to come around Brody and work on a license agreement to come down Brody, and that's how they would have to build that line. Similarly, on the properties on the north side of Oakdale, they could come through city property at the back, or depending on what's happening, they would have to come down Brody. Those are all still part of the negotiation, trying to figure it out. Like I said, ideally, they're going to get an easement, and that's the best way for them to do that. But if that does not work out, we're going to have to look at a license agreement with Austin. So that is where we're at right now. We have the water contract that we are going to be working on, and we'll send, probably bring to council fairly soon. I'm going to hand it over to Barbara, and they'll do a legal review, and then it'll come to you guys. And then we are still working out the final details on that. Austin was going to send, the City of Austin was going to send us a draft of that of what a customer service, customer transfer agreement would look like, and kind of that timeline of those things. These are all projects. The Public Works Committee has reviewed all of them, and they're recommending them moving forward with all of these options. So you will see some of these coming through with the CIP at some point. But I would be happy to answer any questions anybody has about any of these.
For the, the customer transfers, just kind of a general sense of the timeline, what are we talking about in terms of like, what it would look, what it might look like? Or we anticipate looking like that we'd have to take full service ownership of those areas? And I know it might be phased and things like that, but is this like a five-year timeline? Is this a three-year timeline, a 10-year timeline?
I would say since AISD, that project is going to be really a pretty simple project.
Right, that'd be simple, yeah.
We would be hoping that we would do that one within like, with part of the Lone Oak Sunset project that we're going to be doing.
Okay.
So that one would be very quick. I would say probably closer to that three-year timeline on Countrywide because we would be asking for like engineering. It would start in the engineering phases next year, and then you've got to, you know, work your way through that. Town Bridge is wanting to move pretty fast. So Town Bridge will be a, so Town Bridge and AISD will be a pretty quick thing. The other, the extending the Sterns water line down, we're still trying to, to be honest, we're trying to kick that as far down as we can because we, we don't want to do that one for as long as we can. We want to keep, keep those four, those four houses that we already have on those little mini master meters for as long as we can. And, and so we're still trying to work out that trigger timeline for the City of Austin.
That's our Rees.
Is this from the utility? Will this all be from the utility fund or some street fund in there too? Or how does, how is the funding?
So Countrywide, Countrywide would be utility, street, and venue. So it's going to have all three involved.
Okay.
Sterns, all utility, AISD, all utility. Well, there may be a little bit of street in there for the repairs and things like that. Sterns wouldn't have any street repairs, so it would be all utility.
Okay. So, and then, and soon you'll have estimates of what that would be?
Yes. And we're, we're going to have those, they'll be part of the CIP. We have, if you go to the website, there are some estimates on there for, there's a 2022, 2023 CIP. They're, they're on there, kind of listed underneath the current CIP. So they're on there. The only one that's probably going to change is going to be the Countrywide because we're going to include the fire turnaround at the end. That needs to be done.
Eric Purten?
Yeah, looking budget, I, I think that is, is important to, as I mentioned before, in, in this case, this is part of the contract that we have for water service. So it's very, very important. So if we are looking, the Countrywide will be over one and a half million dollars, only one part, without purchasing the other part that they have. And if we are looking Stern, we are also above one and a half million dollars. But if we don't have the ETJ, the other houses at the end, that would save money. As Carolyn, she said, they are not pushing for that. But it's important, and then we need to start thinking there would be some expenditures. The, the meter for the school is something that will be also something that is now, and only, I would like that, we need to understand that there will be a lot of expenditures from that area. That's it.
And I think those numbers you're referencing are from the original engineering estimates from the original CIP, which we know have gone up as a result of materials and equipment and things like that. So take those with a grain of salt.
Yeah, you need to escalation.
Yeah.
You need to add a lot of escalation.
Any other questions for staff from the water presentation? Thank you for pushing forward to this. I know this is, I remember when I first got on council, this was like, 2022 is going to be here in a year now, and it's, we got to get this Sterns Lane thing done. And it's like, no, let's go back to the City of Austin, see if we can. That was, it's on. Yeah. Thank, even when I was on Public Works, it was like, that was the big topic. Councilor Johnson?
So would AISD, would Burger Center become like a customer of Sunset Valley?
Burger Center and the elementary school would become customers of Sunset Valley.
Can we make money off that?
Over a period of years, there's going to be the initial investment. And now, when I did the analysis before, the cost was much higher because we were going to be building a lot more infrastructure. But it would have paid for itself in about 10 years. Now it'll be less than that because we've reduced the cost quite a bit by just purchasing the existing infrastructure.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. All right, council? We're out of agenda items, so we can adjourn. And I'm going to call the meeting at 9:41 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it. We got.
We've something done.